Good evening. This is the Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Town and South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. First of all, we will stand and have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I would ask that you do what I'm about to do, which is silence your phone, if you happen to have it with you. Who gets by without having their phone with them? And I will ask the secretary to read the notice of the hearings we're about to have.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at seven P M. in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application twenty four dash forty six P. C. Tech Solar LLC, request for special exception to three point one point one A. and site plan of development for a small solar energy system on five point six six acres in size on property located at three seventy nine Scantic Road Rural Residential Zone. Number two, application twenty five dash zero one P. Town of South Windsor Recreation Department, request for a special exception to table three point one point one A. and site plan of development for phase one A. of the crosstown trail, including the installation of bituminous trail, boardwalk sections, associated grading and parking area on properties located at seven sixty five Clark Street, fifteen fifty six, fifty nine and sixty Ellington Road, and fourteen oh seven Sullivan Avenue, also residential rural residential zone. Third, P. Z. C. sponsored zoning text amendment to section six point five for signs. This is to modify section six point five point two, sign related definitions. Modify six point five point four general provisions, modify six point five point five illuminated signs to revise language, and add section six point five point five one, six point five point five two, and six point five point five three, and modify table six point five point seven A. signs permitted in single family residential districts to change additional requirements. Also to modify table six point five point seven B. signs permitted in special residential districts to change additional requirements. Modify six point five point eight signs in commercial office slash industrial zones. Modify section six point five point nine signs allowed in Buckland Gateway Zone. Modify section six point five point ten signs in the I. two ninety one corridor zone and I. two ninety one R. R. overlay zone. And then finally modify six point five point eleven signs in R. R. O. Z. to remove item E. And modify six point five point twelve off premises temporary signs to add item E. Also add appendix K. for sign lighting. Phew. Copies of the application are online on file in the office of the town clerk and or the planning department and online at south windsor dash C. T. dot gov slash planning. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard. Written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff eight six oh six four four two five one one, extension two three two nine. Stephen Wagner, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. I bet you didn't know you signed up to read such a long notice. So before we start, I have a question on number one. The note, the notice that our secretary just read talks about a small solar energy system. The actual announcement or the agenda has a large solar energy system. There are two different sections in our regulation, so what are we actually?
We were actually entertaining the large, which has more restrictive requirements. Small, it's supposed to be seven acres or more. The actual acreage is five point six of the solar, but the surrounding area is seventeen acres. So there was a little confusion, but it is large scale, which does require more requirements that have been submitted. So all the requirements submitted related to large scale.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So let me just explain a little bit how we run our public hearings. First of all, we allow the applicant to present whatever information they wish to present. Basically, their, what they're looking for, their justification, and so on. Then we ask for members of, or the town staff to comment. They may have comments and done some work, which would also include the engineering department. Then we ask members of the public who wish to speak, questions, comments, pro or con. When you do speak, we ask you to sign in and also verbally introduce yourself, including your, where you live. You don't have to give a specific address, but you know, it's South Windsor, East Windsor, whatever. And then eventually we will have questions or comments from each of the members of the commission. Doesn't look like we're seating any alternates, but the alternates who are here will be allowed to participate in the public hearing part, but not in our deliberations should we move into that phase. All right, so we're now going to take up application twenty four forty four P. C. Tech Solar LLC.
Good evening, esteemed members of the commission. Thank you for taking the time to hear this. My name is Jin Tao from Boston, and I am here on behalf of C. Tech Solar. I work for Burns and McDonald as a senior environmental engineer. I have a presentation prepped, which you do have a copy in front of you. I guess, okay, it's just on that screen. Having a little bit of trouble.
Think if you just scroll with the mouse.
Ah, perfect. All right, thank you. So I have a quick agenda put together for tonight. Burns and McDonald is an engineering company, and our number one focus is actually safety. So I'm going to start with a typical Burns and McDonald's safety moment, and then I'm going to go into the project overview and then focus on the existing conditions before explaining the proposed project and the proposed conditions and ending with kind of the civil site plans as well as exhibits to support this project. For the Burns and McDonald's safety moment, since it is winter, I am focusing on winter safe driving habits. In general, with the cold conditions, there's the potential for ice and other precipitation that cause difficulty in driving. So it is very important to have the proper maintenance for your car as well as some additional safety kits for your travels. In terms of car maintenance, you should always check your tires if you have winter tires. That's amazing. If you don't, make sure that you have at least all season tires. Check your battery, and actually I got a great question from the I. W. Inland Wetland Agency when I brought this up. But if you don't know if your battery is good, typically a five year lifetime is a good starting point of, hey, should I get my battery checked or replaced? Check your fluids for your car so that those are topped off and ready to go. Make sure that your lights are working as well as make sure that there's no kind of fogging in the light area that could inhibit some of the luminosity of your lights as you're driving in the dark. And then make sure your wipers are working and can handle the snow and ice that might fall. In terms of a safety kit, I like to always keep an ice scraper or shovel. If you know that you are going to be driving in winter conditions, it's always great to have some sand or litter just so that if you do find yourself stuck, you might be able to get yourself unstuck. I actually do always keep blankets in my car just in case you find yourself lost or kind of stuck. It's always good to stay warm. Water is always a must. I don't necessarily keep nonperishable snacks, but that's always good to have. Flashlight warning device and a first aid kit are also very helpful. So jumping into the project overview. Driggy Farm Solar, as described, is proposed at three seventy nine Scantic Road in South Windsor, Connecticut. The existing lot is approximately fifteen point nine four acres. And since we, since the I. W. A. meeting back on Thursday, December fourth, where we presented that the limited disturbance for the project was five point six six acres, we've since been working with the various comments from the town, engineer, the fire department, to actually increase the acreage of the project to provide additional safety and other drainage management features on site. And it is now sitting at about six point three five acres. That being said, the solar facility is still only proposing one thousand nine hundred eighty five solar modules. They are going to be six hundred sixty watts for a total of about one point three one megawatts DC system size. The goal with the inverters is to convert that DC system size to just under one megawatt AC, which puts this project in front of this commission and the local community instead of this, instead of the Connecticut Siting Council. That being said, this system is proposed to be a single axis tracker system. So you will have rows that are going to be oriented north and south, and the panels themselves will rotate with the sun. And the inner row spacing between the proposed panels is about fifteen feet with the panels themselves in kind of that landscape orientation of a single panel, having a width of about seven point eight feet. We decided that kind of width and spacing for the panels because, understanding that Connecticut Deep and the stormwater group, they like to see the inner row spacing between panels to be at least the width of the panels, but they much rather have much greater width in between. Additionally, with the single axis tracker, the shading of the tracker systems and the panels themselves have the propensity to potentially shade row by row, which is why we increased that row, inner row width. The fenced area is still sitting at about five point three three acres, which has not changed since our inland wetland agency application and hearing back on, back in December. And again, that limited disturbance has increased to six point three five, which is associated with a request for a permanent gravel access road to the site by the fire department as well as providing additional kind of drainage mitigation features to Scantic Road from the property that was requested by and that we worked with the town engineer to propose. And that will be shown later on in the proposed conditions. That being said, once this facility is built, the developer, C. Tech, is planning to seed the entire fence array with a pollinator habitat. And I would like to mention right now that as part of the construction for this facility, the sighting of the fence facility and the panels themselves, we're focused primarily on locating it within areas that were less than ten percent slope, which this site essentially is pretty much less than that. We are choosing, choosing very shallow slopes for this project because from a stormwater perspective, that is the kind of minimum slope that Connecticut Deep Stormwater Group is comfortable with, where you don't need to provide additional kind of mitigative features if you have full establishment of the subs, sub cover under the panels themselves, which again, we are going to propose with a pollinator habitat. That being said, following the town regulations, the solar facility fenced area is going to be surrounded by a row of arbor vitae for landscape screening, planted ten feet on center. And we also worked with the town to minimize the overhead utility poles from eight to five that are going to be purely owned by the utility provider and not the client. The client decided to shift their previous overhead poles interconnection to underground per town regulations and have shifted the equipment that were supposed to be installed on those poles into the equipment pad that is fenced within the array area. So that is a quick overview. Are there any questions or should I continue?
You keep going, we'll get the questions later.
Sounds great. Thank you. Looking at the existing site conditions, the existing site is the Driggy Farm. It is a commercial farm and capturing kind of the proposed area in pink of where the solar facility is going to be. That being said, it is going to be fully located within formerly farmed areas. And with this site, it does have a wetland feature here, which we are staying outside of the upland review area of the hundred feet in all aspects. And we, this project did receive a unanimous approval from the I. W. A. back on December fourth. Jumping to the proposed conditions for the facility, we can see, is there a way for me to zoom or, I guess they have that. We are proposing the solar panels in the vertical orientation within this kind of fenced area. It might be a little difficult to see at this angle, but we are maintaining a fifteen foot separation between the panels and the fence. Nowhere along this property or this project will the solar panels encroach upon the existing property line by a hundred feet anywhere. There is the East Windsor and South Windsor Town Line that runs about right here, and it was a choice for the project to keep all panels of this project in the fully enclosed within the South Windsor parcel, portion of the parcel. The interconnection path is going to follow this kind of pink, yellow limited disturbance as well as the new gravel access road. In terms of working with the town engineer, there were concerns of existing drainage from the site surcharging a existing swale along. Scantic, oh, thank you. And there is an existing pipe that it seems to be kind of blocking that flow along this driveway. So as part of working with the town engineer, this project will clean the pipe, but also proposes a diversion berm upstream of the swale that will divert a lot of the runoff from this site in the existing condition and the proposed condition across and not, and bypass the seemingly undersized driveway culvert so that the swale along Scantic Road will be less surcharged during storm events and prevent some of the flooding that has been experienced along this portion of Scantic Road. That being said, we can jump to the proposed civil site plans and exhibits.
So these are the same plans that are in our package?
Absolutely, yes. You should, it should be dated for, it's Rev. three dated.
January seventeenth.
That sounds correct.
Actually, this package is January sixth. There we go.
All right, if everyone has the plans in front of them, the first sheet is the cover sheet. Second sheet is general note sheets and typical abbreviations and line types. Jumping into the third sheet, this is the existing survey for this area. We actually did get an updated one that has additional topo per the town's request that covers this area. That, I guess, I did not, oh, yeah, I did not swap the sheet out. But we do have additional data grabbed for this area that was of concern. The overall project, oh, I can't zoom. Yeah, so we can see that the town separating line is right here, and the project is wholly within the South Windsor side. This, the next sheet is general erosion soil control notes and practices that would govern the construction of this project. One of the benefits, the next sheet is the details associated with the proposed soil erosion controls measures as well as practices. And this is the kind of phased approach for how the, the construction of this site will be done, so.
Excuse me, as you move from drawing to drawing, could you identify the drawing number so we can follow?
Yes, yes, apologize. Let me do that. So right now, we are drawing number.
I think this is EC zero zero three.
Correct, EC zero zero three, which is the erosion and sediment control plan. So the benefit of this site for this specific installation is again, excuse me, the slopes of this site are very shallow. In general, there's a relative high point kind of in this central location, and the site kind of drains in both a northwest and a southeast function. So in general, the plan of action for construction is to stake out the kind of perimeter fence and the outer limits of the LOD and install the necessary kind of silt fence as per the inland wetland associate agencies' requests to prevent any sediment from travel from our site. However, due to the nature of, again, there's going to be very little grading and, or earthwork proposed for this site because it is generally flat. Solar panels can be installed on this with almost little to no grading and with very little problem. So once these erosion control features are put in place, then the team can go and clear the existing fruit trees that are part of this farm. But we are planning on actually leaving the, the roots and stumps in place because we don't foresee them actually impacting kind of the racking post installation. Either, we're trying to determine whether we need ground screws or just pile driven. So there will be very minimal actual earthwork disturbance associated with the construction of this project. That being said, the, we are proposing, we had formerly proposed a timber mat access road through the rest of kind of the farmed area, but due to the request from the fire department of having a more permanent access, we converted that to full gravel. And we are cognizant of needing to install a culvert within that existing swale along Scantic Road to maintain that flow path. Once that clearing is done, if there are any, if the ground was disturbed as part of that procedure, we would go in and seed it temporarily and allow that kind of middle ground establishment for, prior to the racking installation for this site. The racking installation should be relatively simple with the, with the piles driven in. And again, we foresee very little ground disturbance needed based on kind of the equipment vehicles that are needed to install the racking and the panels following after. There will be an electrical trench that is installed, and we kind of just have it depicted here covering kind of all of the rows before tying it in to the proposed concrete equipment pad located kind of central to the site, but furthest away from the residents to the north. I want to make that point because most of our equipment will be located more south and further away from the residents to the north to minimize any of the potential sound from that from emanating all the way to those property lines and the butters. Again, here we have a proposed fence that will be surrounded by the landscape screening of arbor vitae planted ten feet on center. Because of the final condition of the site being that pollinator meadow mix, there actually isn't a need for permanent stormwater features. And we worked with the town engineer to kind of run a quick model of the runoff associated with the existing conditions of the grass kind of farm with trees versus a more meadow condition, which has a lower curve number, which would generate less runoff in all of the storm events. That being said, as long as that's established, we actually have shown that this site should generate less peak runoff to Scantic Road. But again, with kind of the existing swale and culvert being a little bit undersized, we are proposing this earthen berm, which theoretically should just be, should just be pushing dirt in one direction, creating a little bit of a ditch and a berm on the other. So very minimal earthwork, but it should help the Scantic Road flooding problem from this immediate site. Here we have the typical details for the project. Per the inland wetland agency, we did increase the fence gap for their proposed six foot tall fence to have six inches below to facilitate any kind of animal crossings through instead of that four to six inch gap. We've added a typical kind of section for a culvert installation under the proposed gravel access road. And that is the extent of what has been added to this site plan compared to the inland wetland agency application and review. The final exhibit I have as part of this presentation is showing kind of the noise study and the results of the noise study showing that along these property lines, which was connected by W. S. P., that the project would not result.
Give us a second to switch back to the paper that we're supposed to be looking at. We're in your presentation now, or page?
Yeah, this is the presentation, the last page.
Page twenty one?
Yes. No, I don't even have that on my here. Yes, page twenty one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You can go ahead.
Yeah, so this is just the result of W. S. P.'s noise study that C. Tech coordinated for. Yeah, so this is just the result of WSP's noise study that CTEC coordinated for, showing that along these analysis points that the modeled noise should not, should be within bounds of the regulatory limits. And that concludes this presentation. Happy to cover any of the comment and responses that we had as part of this process right now, or if I could leave it to the board to ask any additional questions that they have for the project.
So go ahead and stick around, we'll proceed, and then we'll get back to if we have any questions, or if the public has any questions. So now we ask our director of planning, Michelle Leib.
Yes, thank you. So this is a request for a special exception to 3.11A in site plan development for a large-scale solar system, 5.6 acres in size for the actual solar panels. I'm properly located at 379 Scantic Road in our rural residential zone. Just bring to attention, this is the first application the commission has seen for either a large or a small-scale solar system under these provisions that we put in the regulations in 2019, just as point of reference. This property does straddle the town line with 17.3 acres being total, 15.9 in South Windsor, and 1.3 acres in East Windsor. As indicated, the solar field is entirely proposed on the South Windsor side of the town line. This is subject to your typical special exception criteria of 8.2. You did receive a document in your packets from the applicant kind of addressing how they feel they met these criteria. I will point out specifically the criteria related to noise because that was something we did ask specifically the applicant to address. You did all receive a copy of the noise assessment that the applicant provided, which was pretty comprehensive, kind of emulating the potential noise. The results of it did show that there should be no excessive noise and expect it to be in compliance with state and local noise ordinances. I would point out that the consultant did recommend, or highly recommend, that CTEC include in their specifications to equipment vendors that discrete tones must be controlled, and those are the kind of the annoying tones that people tend to complain about. So as you'll see later on, I do suggest it as a potential approval condition if the commission were to move forward with this application. So I do want to point out that in addition to your general special exception criteria, there was a bunch of other materials required to be submitted by the applicant for this project. So I just want to put on the record what was put into the, to the record by the applicant. There were the drawings of the solar energy system designed by a professional engineer. There's a manufacturer's data sheet about the panels, the mounting systems, the inverter. There's an operation and maintenance plan, a decommission plan, emergency response plan, there's a proof of liability insurance. As indicated, these are all part of the file and available on the website for anybody that wanted to look at it. The dimensional requirements for a large-scale solar abutting residential requires a 100-foot setback from all property lines. The solar arrays are shown to be 20 feet from the South Windsor town line. This, again, is an unusual piece because it does straddle the two property, or the two towns. The applicant intends to keep that 100-foot buffer area in farming and is required to keep it without any development on it to be in compliance with the zoning requirement. So again, we would recommend, recommend an approval condition that that buffer area remain undeveloped during the time that the solar field is in effect. And I think you'll find when we get into reading letters of the, into the record, that the planner from East Windsor is looking for something similar like that to protect any potential development on that side. So the solar arrays are 100 feet from Scantic Road, proposed to be a maximum 12 feet in height. We did, as indicated, staff did require that a more permanent access drive be placed coming off of Scantic Road originally. They just had a temporary drive that would later be taken away. I think the fire marshal and building official and chief wanted to see something permanent, so that was put in, and they now have a turnaround as requested by staff. So both fire and building are satisfied with the changes that were proposed. Other improvements include two concrete paths within the fenced area, and this is where the equipment will be housed. There is a gate shown for access to the site at that location. So the entire array is surrounded by a six-foot-high fence and six-foot-high arborvitae proposed. I'm hearing 10 feet on center. I thought the plan showed 6 feet on center, maybe we can clarify that. In addition to the trees, the staff has recommended that there be a four-to-six-inch gap between the fence and the ground to allow for wildlife passage. And the applicant's intent is to plant a permanent meadow, vegetated cover with pollinator-friendly plantings under the solar arrays, and this meets some of the goals that we have in, in some of our planning conservation development documents. The interconnection from this facility to the grid will be along Scantic Road. Currently, there's five poles being shown to be put in by others. As the applicant indicated, originally, they had shown eight poles per Section 712 and 1.10C. We encourage that the poles be buried unless there's a reason they can't be buried, and they did come back and they did bury three of the poles. So I feel that that was a good faith effort on the applicant's part to try to lessen the impact. Another requirement is a letter from the utility company acknowledging the applicant's intent to install solar. Again, that was paid, made a part of the record. It's a 24-page document, anybody wants to read it, it is again out there as part of the record. There's a small regulated wetland area on the property in the area of the existing house. The inland wetlands agency approved this application at their December 4, 2024 meeting with standard approval conditions, including a bond in the amount of $10,000 for erosion and sedimentation control and the requirement of a wildflower pollinator blend be added to the plans, and this has been added. If this application is approved, the planning staff request no additional approval conditions except those already noted. I would mention that the town engineer did work with the applicant back and forth several times to get to the plan that you see tonight, and he is satisfied that any drainage concerns are addressed with this plan. And I would put on the record that the town did notify East Windsor as required, being in a budding town, and, and you will find that you do have a correspondence from the town related to the project. Be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any engineering comments?
No, again, town engineer is satisfied with this revised plans.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will happily hear from members of the public who have comments, questions, whatever. We tend not to respond to your comments while, while you're here, and then when the commissioners are going over their own questions, I'll also attempt to, to address any comments that you may have. So are there any members of the public who'd like to speak regarding this application? Mr. Paterna.
Thank you, Tierra Wagner.
Andy Paterna from South Windsor.
Thank you all for your willingness to serve on this very important commission. I know it takes a lot of your time. I'm here to support the project tonight. I think there's some, some facts that you should know, and I think it's, it's no secret that most farmers today are struggling a little bit, and so when you get a person who's really struggling, Mr. Draghi has to look for other options to generate some income. And the solar project is one way he can do that. He has another option. He can sell it to a developer, and if you look at that piece of property there, that's a, a good spot for apartments or homes. And I know this commission has had a concern about what our school populations are these days. So this is an option he's, he's chosen because he's just struggling and he can't expand his land, so this will generate some income for 20 years. The other important point is that right now, in this session, there'll be a bill at the legislature that will put more money into helping towns and nonprofit organizations such as the South Windsor Land Trust to purchase both development rights and land. Now, they're taking a different approach. They're saying, they're calling this project Sell, Buy, Protect, and Sell. So it allows a town to come in and buy this piece of property with, usually it's 50% of the cost would be taken up by the state, and then lease this land back to a farmer so it stays in farming forever. So that's going to happen this spring. We hope it's going to pass. Now, the important thing about, for us in terms of solar is that the town, if they purchase this property, the way the contract is written, any new owner would also benefit from this project in terms of the income. So the town could be a future owner and generate an income of this solar project. So I hope you'll consider the options here, and I think it's, it's a very good plan. I think Mr. Draghi is looking for ways to help do some farming. He wants to stay a business, but at the same time, he can't quite make it at the current rates, and this would guarantee him some income. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak about this application? Hearing and seeing none, I understand we have some letters.
This letter is from Jennifer Kruchner?
Yeah, I believe you have one, and then you have a second one.
Right, and then there's Chris Dahl. Okay, which, does it matter which one I refer? All right.
No, I think there's like six or seven.
Oh, within this packet?
I have copies of any, if you don't have them.
Yeah, I know, I only have one. I'll read the one from Chris Dahl, D-A-H-L. This was submitted on Monday, January 27. Dear South Windsor Planning and Zoning Members, I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed utility-scale solar array project on Draghi Farm at 379 Scantic Road. While I fully support the transition to renewable energy sources, I firmly believe that the placement of such a large-scale project is inappropriate and will drastically alter the character of this neighborhood. As a resident of East Windsor, I have witnessed firsthand the dramatic and negative impact of industrial solar installations in industrial areas, I'm sorry, residential areas. The noise and unappealing aesthetics of having a power plant near homes are significant concerns that should not be overlooked. The installation of a utility-scale solar array would drastically alter the character of this East Windsor slash South Windsor neighborhood. The presence of large solar panels, panels, black-chain-linked fences and endless rows of arborvitae, along with other associated infrastructure, would significantly detract from the aesthetic appeal of the community, ultimately lowering property values. In Enfield, under Siting Council Petition 1611, interim town attorney Thomas Tyler submitted testimony regarding a homeowner who, in 2022, went to the Board of Assessment Appeals and gave sworn testimony about a loss of privacy due to clearcutting abutting lots and the devaluation of property caused by solar panels. The BAA deliberated and unanimously granted the appeal, reducing the assessment by 21%. This clearly demonstrates that utility-scale arrays can and do lower property values. We must consider the long-term impact on our community's character and property values before proceeding with such a project. The evidence from Enfield shows that the negative effects are real and significant. Careful consideration must also be taken due to noise from the construction and operation of the solar array. The heavy machinery and construction activities required to install the solar panels would disrupt the peace and quiet that residents currently enjoy. Numerous poles will need to be driven into the ground to hold the racking system. Is this construction noise in compliance with the Town of South Windsor? In regard to inverter noise, this has been an ongoing issue for two and a half years for East Windsor residents that live across from one on Middle and East Road. Despite the promises from the developer that the array would be a quiet neighbor, it has not been. There are many factors that can contribute to noise levels, and the higher frequency that inverters produce, even if it has a lower dB, can be much more noticeable and irritating to those living nearby. The following factors that can affect solar inverter noise are inverter quality and design, installation environment, ambient temperature, load and operation mode, and aging and wear. Additionally, noise issues can also be associated with the cooling fans, electronic switching converting DC to AC power, the transformer and the tilt devices. Utility-scale arrays can have a profound impact with noise and are more suitable in industrial zones or open land away from residential neighborhoods where the project could be developed without compromising the quality of life for residents. Additionally, solar panels contain hazardous materials such as cadmium, lead, and other heavy metals. When panels are damaged, these toxic substances can leach into the soil and water, posing severe risks to human health and the environment. With the increasing, increasing frequency of unusual weather events, large-scale damage to panels has become more common, leading to environmental disasters. Lastly, the developer has stated that there will be no containment system for the transformer oil. This is extremely concerning. By the time the system fails and triggers an alert through the data acquisition system, there is a high likelihood that all the oil will have drained from the system onto the ground, contaminating nearby areas. This lack of containment will result in another environmental emergency. The potential for hazardous materials to leach into our soil and water, combined with the risk of oil spills, underscores the urgent need for stringent safety measures and proper site selection. We must prioritize the protection of our environment and community by opposing the installation of this utility-scale solar array in residential areas. In conclusion, while I support the use of renewable energy, I strongly believe that the proposed utility-scale solar array is not appropriate for this neighborhood. I respectfully request that you reconsider the location of this project and explore alternative sites that would be less disruptive to the community. Chris Dahl. And Chris is, lives in Broadbrook, Connecticut.
And I would note that he did submit some, an exhibit with some noise information that will be made part of the record, I think you all, we'll get that.
Yes, thank you. Um, you wanna, yeah, why don't you read one? My buddy. Yes, let's hand him up. Get that to my friend. I have this one.
So who's going next here? Paul, you're about to read one?
Give me a break.
So this next letter is from the Town of East Windsor Planning and Development Department, dated January 7, addressed to Michelle Leib, Director of Planning, regarding Planning Application 2446P, CTEC Solar LLC. Dear Ms. Leib, thank you for the referral of the above cited application to your office for review. Upon review, I offer the following comments to you and the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. The site plan layout has been designed over the 15.9-acre parcel and was designed to be compliant with South Windsor zoning regulations. The site plan incorporates the 1.5-acre portion of that parcel that lies within East Windsor. This portion of the parcel is identified by the East Windsor assessor as map 002, block 34, lot 075, and a zone agriculture. Although not currently recognized as a building lot, it could be in the future as the parcel satisfies the bulk area requirements and is in proximity to sanitary sewer and public water. The site plan provides for a 100-foot side yard setback as required by South Windsor zoning regulations. These setbacks run over the town line into, into East Windsor. East Windsor zoning regulations similarly require a 100-foot buffer between commercial and residential properties. The site plan as proposed shows solar panels to be installed within 10 to 15 feet of the town boundary. Recognizing the town boundary as a side yard from which setbacks would be measured, could remedy this inconsistency. To address the potential future use of the 1.5 acres of land within East Windsor as a building lot, I respectfully ask the commission to consider requiring either, one, the applicant owner modify the site layout to afford the 100-foot side yard setback and buffering to the East Windsor/South Windsor boundary line, or, two, the applicant owner relinquish any post-development use of the East Windsor portion of the parcel as a separate building lot retained as a buffer for adjacent properties. Please make these comments part of your public hearing. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted, Ruth Ann Calabresi, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. Do you have one to read? Okay. Go for it.
I will enthusiastically read this end of the record. It'll take a while. This, not letter, but articles from Jennifer H. Kruchner, JBS Properties LLC, dated January 22, 2025. Dear South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to address the PZC regarding the above referenced application. My husband and I own the abutting property. My husband and I own the abutting property at 365 Scantic Road in East Windsor. While I was ready and able to attend the 11425, or January 14th, hearing and make a statement for the record, I'm unfortunately not able to attend and the postponed hearing date on January 28th, 2025. And as a result, I am sending you my comments for the hearing and writing. Please make this letter and all included attachments part of the public hearing record. I strongly oppose special exception application for the utility-scale solar project at Draghi Farm due to the fact that this utility-scale solar project is in undeniably incompatible industrial use being proposed on farmland and a rural residential zone with significant detriment impact on a contiguous agricultural residential zone. The Town of South Windsor Open Space Master Plan recognizes the project's proposed site as being comprised of both, comprised of both prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance in accordance with the Prime Farmland Soils Map. In fact, a closer look at this map indicates that the 1985 solar panels will be built on the section of the property specifically designated as prime farmland and will require the removal of all existing trees and shrubs on that prime farmland. In the 2024 P O C D, the PZC stated that farmland is a finite resource and there are concerns that once developed, these farmlands will be lost forever. This section in the P O C D also declares that the P O C D advocates for the preservation of farmland. Approval of this application could very well result in the prime farmland being lost forever. While technically possible, it is not very likely for a solar farm to fully revert back to traditional farmland once it's been developed, as land modifications needed for solar panels, often significantly after the soil structure, and may not be easily reversible, making it less suitable for conventional agriculture. CTEC's response to the question of site restoration was that the grantee shall remove the above-ground and below-ground to a depth of three-feet-below-grade solar facility from the property and all property disturbed by the grantee shall be restored to a condition reasonably similar to its original condition. This limitation and qualification do not provide sufficient assurance that a full-site restoration back to its prime farmland condition will happen. Approval of this application would undermine the South Windsor conservation goal to support farmers, farming, and farmland preservation to maintain and enhance the health and economic benefits of local food and enhance overall community ambiance, and would not adhere to either Objective A, continue to support farmers and farming, or Objective B, continue to preserve farmland. Approval of this application would also be in direct conflict with the second highest priority of South Windsor residents, which is to preserve farmland. Additionally, in the P O C D existing zoning map, Figure 2.6, the P Z, the P ZC further distinguished the project property by designated it as within the Route 5 North Overlay Zone, stating, though the recently adopted Route 5 North Overlay Zone, this area is envisioned to maintain a residential focus with densities between one and two units per acre. There may also be some opportunities for limited commercial expansion for the properties fronting Route 5. South Windsor zoning regulations, Section 5.8.4, permitted uses for R5NOZ, which is a Route 5 North Overlay Zone, does not include any industrial uses. Clearly, the PZC did not envision an industrial-scale solar development with a non-conforming density being suited in R5NOZ. While Section 5.8.2A makes it clear that landowners are only encouraged and not required to develop in accordance with Section 5.8, the intention of the PZC here is also clear to make a concerted effort to add certain commercial use opportunities which are compatible with the remaining residential uses. Section 5.8.2B of the zoning regulations states, get given that this area serves as an entrance to South Windsor from the north excellence of site planning, landscaping architecture, and building architecture is an essential element of R5NOZ. All such developments shall take into consideration travel speeds on the abutting highway and compatibility with adjoining residential uses. Landscape architectural elements, for example, berms and plantings, are thus critical between proposal buildings, parking areas in Route 5, and between building/parking lots and residences. Low-impact development, LID, measures shall be incorporated into the site design. Thus, allowing a proposed large-scale industrial solar project to be built as per its current specifications on this particular property within the R5NOZ will defeat the entire purpose of the R5NOZ. Also, as the PZC is aware, the project is being proposed in a South Windsor Rural Residential Zone, RR, and is partially sited on a contiguous East Windsor town line and agricultural residential zone. In their zoning code, it's A1. Section 8.2B1G of Chapter 124 zoning in the 2024 Supplement to the General Statutes of Connecticut states that zoning regulations shall be designed to consider the impact of permitted land uses on contiguous municipalities and in the planning region as defined in Section 4-124I in which such municipality is located. Consequently, the PZC must consider the potential adverse effects on this project on East Windsor as well on South Windsor. According to the attached letter support, which I received from East Windsor First Selectman, Jason Bowza, Exhibit A, if given the chance, East Windsor would reject this type of large-scale solar development being imposed on East Windsor A1 Zone. As this site plan illustrates, the project site is in a densely populated residential area and are over 25 South Windsor, in their area, and there are over 25 South Windsor and East Windsor residential homes within a 500-foot radius of the project site. Similarly, utility-scale solar projects sited in residential zones in our area have demonstrated that homes in such proximity to an industrial solar array are adversely affected by, first, by construction noise, followed by operational noise from the panels, inverters, and transformers. Furthermore, these similar projects have also established that utility-scale solar projects create a negative visual impact on surrounding residential homes, from the solar panels, glare, industrial tile fencing, and deficient landscaping. An industrial-scale solar project, like the one being proposed here, belongs in an already industrially-zoned site, not on land zoned as residential and rural, and not on the border of another town's agricultural residential zone. In reading Solar Industries' basic literature, it likewise confirms that a solar facility does not belong in or a resident, near a residential neighborhood. A responsibly managed solar facility is situated away from usable agriculture land and residential neighborhoods. Also, it is highly recommended that the proximity of a solar facility to human domiciles be at least half-mile to two miles away to limit exposure from the emitting electromagnetic energy, noise pollution, and other potential hazards. Without question, the proposed Draghi Farm site does not conform to industry standards. Certainly, CTEC should be aware of their industry standards and best practices, yet they have failed to acknowledge and have actually dismissed concerns about the potential negative environmental impacts to the neighborhood's character and assault to the neighborhood's quality of life, which will result from the project. CTEC's assertion from the project means that the special exception criteria, the architectural design is aesthetically pleasing and blends well into the surrounding area, and the character of the neighborhood will be maintained or minimally disrupted by merely meeting the minimum setbacks and minimum screening requirements is absurd. In the P O C D, the PZC acknowledged the need for South Windsor to advocate for considerations for scenic resources and view sheds and minimizing noise impacts to neighboring properties. Should a utility-scale solar project be proposed on South Windsor farmland? CTEC's claim that there is no potential noise issue simply because the noise from the project will not be over the state's allowed decibel level is disingenuous at best. The decibel levels expressed in the proposal will be similar to those that are being experienced by East Windsor residents near East Windsor Solar 1. These East Windsor residents have been negatively impacted by amplitudes below the guidelines, approximately 30 decibels. While this is the decibel level of a constant whisper, this equates to high-pitched buzzing all day long, disturbing that neighborhood's tranquility and ambiance. The noise study provided by the applicant also acknowledges the following. A discrete tone is a sound that consists primarily of a single pitch, such that it is clearly audible against the normal broadband background sounds, even when the tone is at lower level. Tones are generally more annoying than broadband noise. If an equipment source generates a discrete tone noise is defined in the Connecticut Deep Standards, the allowable overall level of noise is reduced by five decibels. It is generally not possible to model the potential for discrete tones since this would require the use of propagation algorithms applied to a quarter or a third octave-band data which are not available. The source-specific measurements data for the Solitra DC AC inverter, for example, field sound level testing was performed on a Solitra inverter by WSP on April 9th, 2024, showed a prominent discrete tone is produced. Therefore, it is likely that such a tone will develop at the Draghi Farm facility. WSP highly recommends that CTEC include in their specification to all equipment vendors that discrete tones must be controlled. Further, CTEC's claim that there will be no adverse effects on surrounding property values is wholly unsubstantiated. Recent studies have shown that similar industrial solar projects sited in residential areas and on former farmland have a negative impact on surrounding home values. In August 2024, a literature review on the impact of utility-scale solar on housing prices by LSU Center for Energy Studies, Exhibit B, reviewed the current body of literature examining effects of utility-scale solar and concluded, "The empirical literature suggests that utility-scale solar development has a potential to reduce housing values for homes within approximately one-half-mile radius of these installations." Empirical estimation suggests a reduction of 1.5%, 6.9% in housing values. Studies that analyze housing values in rural areas specifically find that utility-scale solar is associated with a 2.5% to 5.8% reduction in housing values. There are numerous South Windsor and East Windsor residential homes located within one-half-mile of the project site and are therefore within this impact zone. If the project is approved, the property values in both towns will be negatively impacted, which could also result in a reduction in property tax revenues for each town. Furthermore, the project has a nonconforming density of 36%, which is more than twice than a 15% density requirement for the rural residential zone where the project is being proposed. If the East Windsor portion of the Draghi Farm parcels relinquish for any future development as requested by the East Windsor Director of Planning and Community Development, this nonconformity will be even greater and even less supportable. The 15% density requirement for a rural residential zone is not specifically superseded by Section 7.21 of the zoning regulations. This fact raises the question of how the 36% nonconformity issue is being resolved and the concern that it might be disregarded. If the project is approved within the existing 36% nonconforming density, it would set a very dangerous precedent for future solar developments in all of South Windsor residential and rural residential zones. It would also very likely open the door for every other solar developer to target South Windsor residential and rural residential zones for their next industrial-scale solar project. CTEC should be held to the same high standards as other developers to do the right, to do the job right, and set up a property-sized facility in a properly-zoned location, not attempt to force its will on South Windsor and East Windsor residents who do not envision living next to a utility-scale solar project when they purchase their homes. There are plenty of commercially and industrially-zoned sites in South Windsor that could easily meet the special exception criteria and more suitably conform with industrial solar facility standards than Draghi Farm does. South Windsor clean energy goals are already being addressed by responsibly industrial solar at New Way, an industrial zone, and on rooftops at Aldi, Revolutions, and Nomads. These examples prove that solar developers do have the ability and resources to responsibly locate their industrial-use projects on more appropriate and compatible sites. It should not be necessary to destroy prime farmland and cause a decline in residential property values simply to make it more attractive and cost-effective for some developers. The PZC recently, has recently strictly held housing developers to the established regulations. Standards and criteria set up by the PZC, and I respectfully submit that the PZC has another opportunity here to hold CTEC to the same standards another opportunity here to hold CTEC to the same standards by denying the application. Finally, while a multitude of factors point to the appropriateness of the application project being approved at the proposed project site, if it were to be approved, this particular site warrants the highest scrutiny and requires an architectural review with high design and landscaping standards. And while the nuisance issues from placing industrial solar in residential zones cannot simply be designed away, this particular site compels additional considerations, such as requiring a viewshed analysis to be done from the perspective of the neighboring residential properties to determine potentially adequate screening, requiring an aesthetically-pleasing fence more compatible with the residential and agriculture community it will be located in, requiring preemptive noise-reduction mitigation measures, and requiring all security bonds be updated yearly. For all of the foregoing reasons, I respectfully request the project be denied by the PCC since approval of the project would: 1. Allow an incompatible use on an unsuitable site; 2. Directly contradict South Windsor conservation goals and objectives; 3. Significantly disrupt or diminish the quality of life in the surrounding residential neighborhood; 4. Cause a decline in nearby residential property values; 5. Be dramatically inconsistent with the character of the rural residential and agricultural neighborhood; 6. And have substantiated adverse impact on the contingents of East Windsor. Thank you very—truly yours, Jennifer H. Crucher. And we do have the exhibits attached. Do I need to read through them? Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other letters?
There should be three more that are all a lot shorter.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavaniaro, for taking that. So the first letter or email is from Lynn Stanley residing at 87 Ry Street in Broadbrook. And it states, "I oppose Application 24-46P for the following reasons. Number one, current South Windsor requirements state no building shall take up more than 15% of the acreage. This solar project will take up 35%. Special exceptions should not be granted. Third, the project location is not desirable for the residential area as it will cover fertile farmland. Fourth, long-term repercussions from solar development will impact the future agricultural potential. I am asking the board to deny this application. Respectfully, Lynn Stanley." Second, submission via emails from Marie Urbanetti residing at 213 Blue Ridge Drive in Manchester. Her comments, "I am writing to stand in solidarity with South Windsor and East Windsor residents who are not in favor of industrial-scale solar facilities in or near residential areas. Electric-generating facilities should be responsibly sited on industrial-zone land, ideally on brownfields or other non-natural or rehabitable land. Please carefully consider the serious negative impacts of these projects on your residents, Marie Urbanetti, Manchester, Connecticut." And the last is from Justin Mattern residing at 646 Pleasant Valley Road in South Windsor. Comments, "There are a lot of nimby, not-in-my-backyard people who are being very loud about no solar. Please do not mistake this loud minority for most residents of the town. I and certainly others support green energy in my backyard, on my roof, anywhere we can. We just support it quietly."
Thank you. Okay. Again, we ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment. Okay. We'll start with Commissioners. Commissioner Kawashi.
I don't have any comments at this point.
Commissioner Cavaniaro.
Thank you. You can laugh, it's fine. I don't necessarily have any questions prepared. Reading through that now, and this may be a question for the Commission if we want to keep the public hearing open for another meeting, because, I mean, if there's that much opposition and there's other facts to consider, I feel comfortable leaving it open for another meeting, really give ourselves time a little bit more—I guess, time to grab our heads around it. I mean, I don't necessarily have any questions prepared or anything like that, but that's sort of where I feel on this, and I'm happy to sort of come back if any questions pop up. But, like I said, I sped through that, so I'll have to read through it again, but I have nothing else.
Commissioner Retire.
I just had a question among the several comments that were made in that letter. One was talking about the ability of the property to be returned to farmland once the solar panels are done. Could you respond to that?
This is Jin Tao with Burns &amp; McDonald. Yes, I did. So, the benefit of this specific site and the concern with solar development on agricultural land and prime farmland is typically—you would—with the grading and site preparation, there is the risk of loss of that prime farmland soil, especially if you are looking to have to shape the land and grade it where you're doing either more than that top six inches of cut in any location. For this specific site, because of the existing conditions of it being generally flat, we do not anticipate the need to actually do that at all, so all prime farmland soils will be left in place as part of the construction of this project. That being said, we are actually adding additional benefit of reseeding it post-construction to make sure that we are establishing a very stable cover to protect the prime farmland soil over the 20-year duration—we're anticipating 20-year duration of the project itself.
And then the other question I had—I know there was an extensive report generated dealing with noise levels. I know you didn't report on it separately. It seemed to be quite extensive, and it sounds like noise levels are within compliance?
Correct. The noise levels are in compliance, and as part of this project, we are very cognizant of impacting the neighbors to the north. Again, to the south and to the east, we're pretty much forested, so noise should not be traveling in that direction. The goal of this project is to locate the inverters and the transformers kind of in that southwest corner of the proposed project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
I'm also in favor of keeping it open. My concern—I would like to take a visit myself—I'd like to get a copy of that letter, and I would also like to visit the Middle and East Road site in East Windsor just to hear the magnitude of the inverter. And a question, Mr. Tao, the power generated from this solar array here, is this for Connecticut Power or is this going out of state?
This is for Connecticut Power. The interconnecting pole is along Sciantic Road, and the interconnection agreement is with Connecticut Power.
And then also, for Mr. Paterna, you had brought up—the—you had made a comment regarding the—I forgot which commission you'd be—you were referring to for the—
Open space, maybe?
—open space for development rights for this property. Are they already seeking a grant, or is it—
Well, that grant until that legislation passes is not available right now, but there is $2.1 million in our own open-space fund in town.
Correct.
That's what they're going to use if they approve it, if the town council approves it. And the development rights will be for the land surrounding that can still be farmed. So development rights are not where the solar project is.
So when you would refer to purchasing—
Right.
—the whole—
That's in the future. If the town—with this new legislation—if the town wants to do that, they could purchase it, have electricity go into town, and then lease it to a farmer for the surrounding property.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
So I was just reading this question-and-answer handout that we were given in our packet where there were several questions and then answers from Mr. Tao. So, just to put it in the public record, this is a 20-year lease with the right to extend for up to three additional terms of five years each, so that's 15 and 25, that's about 40 years if you went the whole term. The property owners consented and executed this lease agreement, and the answer was yes. And then upon termination, I think we talked about, you know, the breaking down of the site and so forth. I am curious, though, EverSource will be purchasing the renewable energy credits? EverSource, you know, supplies power to many states in the area. How do they keep it all in Connecticut?
That I do not know, but I can ask the question back to the developer in that and review the interconnection application and provide an answer if you guys are looking for it.
I know that array in East Windsor we all talk about, that, you know, acres and acres. I mean, you drive for a mile and you still see it. It's obviously so big that there's a lot of it going out of state and very little staying in East Windsor, so I'm interested in that. You know, I do agree with the farming community. They need to find alternate ways to pay the bills. Is this the way or is—it's just a way? So I'm not totally against it, but I think we all have just more questions. Thank you.
Don't sit down. So you've represented that the impact to the earth is minimal in terms of erosion and grading, and I understand there'll be some disruption with the creating buffers, but do I have that about right, that the impact to the land is pretty minimal?
For the installation of this array, it should be. There would be little to no earthwork needed, and again, with the existing cover type being kind of those fruited trees in rows and grasses in between those trees. The trees do need to be cut, but we have plans of leaving the roots in place. They should not impact the installation of the piles associated with the racking. So the only real, I guess, impact to the earth would be those piles that are going to be driven into the ground for the solar panel racking.
Okay, so early in your presentation, you talked about burying the lines.
Correct.
Does that change it at all? I don't—I have no idea how deep we have to go to bury those lines. I imagine fairly deep.
The electrical conduit associated with the interconnecting of the arrays going towards the equipment pad, that can be buried within two to three feet. So essentially, you can kind of just dig a small trench and backfill it with what you've dug up and reestablish that. So again, there should be minimal transportation of the prime farmland soils.
All right, and as Commissioner Dexter referenced, I too found the letter between you and Jennifer Crucher to provide a lot of good information and to Commissioner Dexter's question. So, number 11, which entities would purchase the energy-capacitive renewable energy certificates? And the response is EverSource will be purchasing the REC. So would you say that EverSource is the primary beneficiary of this?
That—I—
Other than, of course, Mr. Draghi?
That I actually do not know the right answer to, and I can look into kind of how to provide you guys with additional information.
All right, so I want to make a comment for the record. You don't need to comment on this. So there has been an awful lot written lately about our utility costs. In my 18 years living in South Windsor, I just paid the highest utility bill I've ever paid. I am hopeful that if this comes to fruition, that we residents, the 10,000 households in our town, get some kind of relief. So I just wanted to put that in the record, and those are all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
No questions tonight, but I would also like to recommend—
Commissioner Magansky?
Oh.
Oh, I thought you were done. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
We'd just like to leave it open, not close it tonight.
My comments are exactly the same. I agree it should stay open to get additional feedback.
Okay, I have a number of questions and comments. First of all, and some of these are kind of trivial, but I'll just do them in the order I wrote them down, I'm sorry. The parking—the trackers, are they parked vertically at night so rain can get directly into the swamp?
Even if they were left perfectly horizontal, there's actually a gap space between each panel, so the intention is the rain will run off the panels, and due to the height of the installation, it shouldn't result in any negative velocity that would impact the existing ground. But in general, the off-position is kind of slanted, not perfectly vertical, so yes, rain should be running off of the panels.
So could you describe—and I'm sure it's in some of the drawings—but could you describe how each of these panels is actually installed in the ground? I mean, I'm used to seeing solar things where they have these big arrays of, you know, metals to support the panels, but I suspect you're, what, putting a pole in the ground? What are you—how are you mounting these?
Yeah, so it seems like single-axis trackers. The panels themselves are going to be mounted on arms that pivot around a centralized pole. That pole is going to have individual piles that are forming their connection to the ground and elevated, and those piles are the ones that are going to be driven down. So those piles are going to be spaced relatively evenly along the array. I don't right now know the number of piles that are going to be needing to be driven, but essentially, those are going to be the, like, minimal impacts to the existing ground.
So for each actuator, does it have its own pile or is it a separate—
No, no. It should be a series of panels that would need, like—a series of panels would need, like, two piles. Again, the spacing of it is still to be designed and determined.
It's still a relatively small amount of ground is actually taken up with these piles.
Exactly.
I read very carefully the entire noise report. I was actually impressed that they dealt with this issue of tones, which our current noise regulations just deal with decibels, and that doesn't really deal with the psychological impact of some of these noises. So, I mean, maybe you could talk a little bit about what they were talking about with the tones and those kind of noises that are more annoying, and by annoying, I mean affecting people's lives. Okay, it's not trivial, so what are we doing about that?
So, per the recommendation of the study, the client is going to make sure—work with the specific equipment to choose ones that would have less of the annoying tones.
Okay, and then do you also get a benefit from the distance?
Just from a sound perspective, yes, but again, I think the study mentioned that those tones would still, I think, carry, but again, with the distance to the property lines, the decibel level of the tones are going to be within regulation. It's the tones themselves that we're trying to mitigate for.
The way I read the report, you're actually, what, maybe 10 decibels below the limits?
Yeah, the projection—the projected models show us, like, under that 30, under 30, whereas the ambient noise is, like, kind of within that 32 to 40 range.
Okay, so, separate from this project, but also now in connection with this project, we've heard a lot about noise generated up in East Windsor by some of those projects up there. In fact, I think some people have said, you know, the noise is coming right across the street to my house. Where are you at East Windsor? Do you have a street address or something where this complaint is coming from, and that we could compare what this is proposing to what they're experiencing?
I think the principal project that is receiving a lot of these comments is the East Windsor Solar One Project, which was a Signing Council project. I don't have the address with me, but I can definitely look in the Signing Council records for that location.
I would appreciate knowing that, because I think a number of us would like to go listen to that on a sunny day. We can't go at night, okay, and just hear kind of what does it sound like, and then maybe we could appreciate, as we drive away from that location, get out of our cars and whatever distance we have here, whether we can still hear that noise and would be bothered by it. But I'd like to convert all those numbers and reports to an actual experience that I think any of us could have, and just make sure we understand the experience that we're going to have or not have with the noise from your project. So I think I would appreciate, maybe you could tell our planner, and she could send that out to us, what that specific address is where the homeowners are complaining. Because we've had other situations where people live near noise that is within the decibel limits and still very annoying, okay, and not necessarily solar projects. The other part of that is—I was very impressed by the noise report, and then I started to ask myself, do our regulations cover this kind of noise, not just for solar panels, but from any industry or from maybe some of these big battery projects or whatever? You know, are we really dealing with the kind of noise that people have to live with? Okay, so that's not your issue, but I think we, as a commission, need to go back and look at how we're addressing noise in all of industrial and non-industrial uses. Got that, got that. There was some mention of construction noise in one of the letters. We generally have regulations about the hours that construction can be done. Maybe our—
Yeah, this, being in a residential zone, this would be subject to that specific ordinance for construction in residential zones, so yeah, we would certainly advise the applicant of those hours.
I don't know if you've memorized the hours, but—
I haven't, but I think at 7:00 a.m. is the earliest you can start up power equipment, and I think nothing on Sundays, if I recall correctly, but I will be glad to share that with the applicant.
And I think probably—I mean, even though it's already in the regulations, it might be good to have a condition to that.
Sure, we could reinforce it through a condition.
There was mention of toxic substances. I guess—I don't know how to evaluate that, but I guess there'd be—if a solar installation is damaged, I don't know, by a tornado or something or a fire, what actual toxic substances come out of these things?
Very little, realistically. I mean, the panels themselves are covered in very thick glass, and I think, like, even with recent instances of hail damage, the—there's very little leaching of the physical hard, like, particles that are associated with the filaments themselves getting much anywhere else, so.
Well, it's actually a crystal, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any independent articles about that? I think it's kind of a strange allegation, and I'm having trouble picturing it myself, but I'd like to know if there's anything available on that subject.
I'm not aware of anything. I don't know if you want to do some—
I think this is—this is actually a question that does pop up from the Signing Council. I think one of the members does request kind of a materials sheet for the panels themselves, showing that a lot of the materials of the panels are not toxic. I think it's generally accepted from the industry that most panels do not have the levels of toxicity associated with anything that's permanent.
So describe the Route 5 overlay zone that was mentioned.
So what you've got to remember about an overlay zone is everything in the underlying zone is allowed, right? So this underlying zone is row residential and solar, large and small scale, are allowed in row residential zones. The Route 5 overlay zone was put in place so that residential properties along the northern part of Route 5 could take advantage of some commercial opportunities where they wouldn't have had them. A good example is a landscaper can't have a home occupation where they have a big barn with all their equipment and whatnot. We specifically wrote in the regulations that that type of use would be allowed in the Route 5 North area, again, recognizing that single-family housing exists up there, it's a busy corridor, not wanting to put commercial zoning in place, but allowing some flexibility for folks to be able to do things other than just live in a single-family house and, you know, have the same A-20 regulations that you have in the middle of town.
In fact, we did allow—that for a dance school, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah, so that's probably the one example we have of what was approved about 2015. You haven't seen any other activity. You do have a text amendment coming forward that was just submitted to try to broaden uses in that zone to allow for animal agriculture, but, you know, again, it's just to give people an opportunity to get some commercial—if that's what they want to.
Just to avoid confusion, the overlay zone is not implemented unless someone comes in here and applies to have it, right?
Correct. It's an opportunity for someone to take advantage of, but the underlying zone is always available.
So as far as this project is concerned, we're dealing with the underlying zone?
That's correct.
Okay. There was mention about oil from the transformers, and then a reluctance to provide a pad—I mean, I've seen these in power plants, okay, where they have a concrete pad with walls, and if the transformer leaks, it just stays in that pad, no drain, nothing.
I will have to check with CTEC to see where that comment came from. I will also have to check with this specific transformer and the amount of oil that this small transformer has. The transformer itself is planned to be installed on a concrete pad, but that concrete pad doesn't have any, like, built-in kind of storage system associated with it, but this is actually the first time I've heard a comment that these transformers pose a threat of oil leakage on a site, so that I will have to check back in and provide some more feedback to the board.
Okay, I mean, we also have— Okay, I mean, we also have transformers on every other utility pole in our neighborhood, so different transformers may or may not have any oil in them.
That's, that's my general thought. The large-scale transformers associated with substations, they definitely have specific oil containment regulations because they have like hundreds of gallons of oil. And that has a specific requirement to provide a subsurface kind of containment system that is one-lined and two, will not allow that oil to leach out into any other form of either runoff or any other aspects of the site. But I do not believe that these are, these transformers would have the same requirements.
Okay, but maybe we could get an answer to that comment, unless it's in this letter which we were referring to. So just, I mean, there's a lot of, especially in the Kutchner letter, Kutchner letter, about this not being consistent with our zone. Is there anything about this project that's not consistent with the zone?
You know, I think what the confusion is, is lot coverage, how I interpret lot coverage and have interpreted always is it's gonna be an impervious coverage of buildings, so it's a pole coverage, and it's about five percent in that area. So I think we, and I talked again about correcting that number, because lot coverage isn't a visual thing. It's for, you know, it's for the rainwater, what, you know, what are we covering that doesn't allow water to seep down in? So I think when you calculate that number, you'll be, I think it's five percent within the whole six-acre area, so you'll be under the fifteen percent. That's just a miscommunication of not correcting it with, on the zoning data table. So, like an impervious coverage, we took impervious coverage out of the residential zone a couple decades ago because we're using lot coverage to serve as an impervious coverage kind of item. So, that's how we explained it. So, but beyond that, you know, again, because the property does go over town boundaries, the setback is from the property boundary, which happens to be in East Windsor. That's why the hundred feet will have to remain as an open area on the East Windsor side of it to be in compliance, so.
Which Drakey is intending to do. We're only intending to build the portion within the South Windsor portion, and the East Windsor portion is to remain as farm.
And I think that was the request of the planner was either or, so, you know, again, those would be recommended approval conditions along those lines.
So, that's the request that they relinquish the right to develop within a hundred feet, yeah, okay.
Correct, because it has to remain open to be in compliance with the setback. You know, it's always a little tricky when you're at a town line, because, you know, people own land over town line, and uses go over town lines, and we've kind of, over the years, different town attorneys have interpreted differently. We have lows that goes right through the town line. So you have some examples where zoning hasn't been respected at a town line, and my opinion is a setback from a town line is appropriate for a side yard setback, and that's what we, you know, we had the applicant follow with a hundred feet from the property boundary.
So there's also repeatedly that this is an industrial use, is that in our.
You allow it in your residential zone by special exception, so it's in your use table.
Okay, and then.
And again, I would add that you have a significant amount of requirements, which the applicant has submitted as part of the record to evaluate as part of the application.
So I know a little bit about renewable energy credits, although I'm not by far an expert, but when the utility agrees to buy the electricity that this thing produces, and it's probably a specific rate that they will pay over the life of the project, either with an escalator or a flat rate, they benefit from buying that by getting what are called renewable energy credits, which they have to develop in order to comply with state law. So, they get a benefit from buying this electricity in the form of these renewable energy credits. So, this is very normal, if you put solar energy on your roof, that happens. They're buying the renewable energy credits from my roof, along with the electricity. That's all the comments I had. With all this, are there other questions or comments, yes?
So, curious, on page six of the sound study, a couple of things to just highlight. First is your measuring of hertz levels is interesting that you pick sixty-three and one-twenty-five, when the majority, the frequency of the noise that is emitted by a sixty-hertz transformer is actually at a hundred and twenty hertz. So you're skipping over that exact hundred and twenty hertz level? I'd like to know what it is at one-twenty, first question. Second question, I also find it interesting that you stopped measuring at eight K. So, I just looked up a study about Solarc's, because there's some lawsuits against a manufacturer of transformers that are commercial for solar panels. And the Solarc twelve kilowatt produces a whine that begins at fourteen kilohertz, ends at sixteen kilohertz, and peaks at fifteen kilohertz, which is a pretty high pitch that can travel for very long distances. You're measuring a much lower frequency range? I'm just curious why it didn't, I'm suspicious as to why it didn't go above eight K. So I'd like some feedback and measurements all the way up to twenty on a sound study.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. I will have to get back to the sound engineer, who did this study, and get that feedback from them.
And then also on your, it identifies that the, what is this thing called? The Selectria XGI fifteen hundred two fifty series, your technical data page?
What page are you on?
It's, there's no page number, it's almost at the end. It's maybe, I don't know, ten or fifteen pages from the end. But it identifies that the acoustic noise rating on that device is seventy-three decibels at one meter, and then sixty-seven decibels at three meters, doesn't identify, is that just raw noise? Or again, is it, are we, are we measuring tones, and what tones are they measuring?
Okay, yeah, that is a question I will ask back.
Thank you. No other questions?
Okay, so there's a lot of questions.
I think on, one of the letters, they referred to Middle Road, East Road as the source of where this inverter, where the noise, one of the residents had.
In East Windsor, you're talking?
Yeah.
The, the big, the big farm?
Yeah, I think I heard, I heard it in one of the correspondence.
I guess, still be very helpful to have a specific.
I can, I can certainly reach out to the planner in East Windsor and ask her where the hotspots are.
So, is, yes, Commissioner was.
Yeah, just one quick question, I know that you're talking about like hailstorms for like contaminants and stuff potentially, but there's gotta be some studies out there for, so, I've, I just did a quick like search, but for fires, right? How does that impact even not just the soil and water, but like air, right? This, because this is a residential neighborhood, what could be the potential impacts? And have we looked at any studies from how other maybe solar farm fires could have impacted areas?
So, there is a, I have not, to answer the question, I have not found any studies associated with addressing kind of the results of fires on solar farms. In general, the solar farms are designed with kind of automatic shut-offs to prevent kind of the propagation of fire through the system. That being said, the way to fight electrical fires, which again, the solar field is electrified, is through kind of chemicals instead of water, so it's going to, the goal is to kind of like keep it contained in its specific area. But I do not know what the aftereffects of a fire on a solar facility might be.
I think that that would be kind of interesting to know, especially since we're in a residential area. And the other thing too, is I noticed a couple people mentioned, I couldn't find anything in here, maybe it was. But how do, where did, how did we justify knowing that it wouldn't affect property values? Like, is there a way that we can verify that it's not gonna affect property values for homeowners in that area? Like, have we looked at other communities that have put in solar farms in areas? I mean, I think someone mentioned even like potential like being able to kind of argue the taxable rate for a home based on depreciation, right? So do we know if that could impact the homes in that area?
Well, it's not for the staff to determine whether it's affecting property values. So, if you're looking for information from the applicant, you would, or if the public wants to make the claim, they provide the information.
Yeah, that's probably more of a like, how do we?
I've heard claims both ways. It's very hard to kind of judge isolated pockets of development, especially with kind of inflation, other economic factors at play. I haven't heard a good argument for either or in this support, but it is definitely an argument that is brought up. That's the best that I have right now for that.
It would certainly have to do also with how effective the screening is, I mean, if you can't see it.
Right, I agree.
I, I will say though, as part of Jennifer's letter, the specific site that had the property value impact, there was clear cutting that was mentioned on that site around for the adjacent properties. Again, this project, we are adhering to kind of just the existing kind of farmed area, and there will be no clear cutting of trees except for the existing agricultural trees that are going to be removed and replaced with kind of meadow and the facility itself. We are maintaining all the buffers, and all the trees around are not gonna be changed. So this doesn't match that exact condition and project based on just, we're not, we're not proposing to do a lot of clear cutting of existing forest. And I know that's always been a rough spot in Connecticut for solar developers of, there's not really true open spaces, industrials are some, but those, there's other industrial needs to fill those industrial zone areas. So like, a lot of areas are focusing on either open space associated with farming or kind of open space associated with forests. And, I mean, if I were to choose one, I'd rather go agricultural, because again, if you design it properly, and if you choose a site that is more conducive for solar where the existing topography is flat and you do very little earthwork, you have the capability of preserving that prime farmland through the life cycle of the project. And then upon the decommissioning and removal of the project itself, that can easily be returned to prime farmland versus kind of clear cutting of forests, that's much harder to kind of return back to a mature forest afterwards, so.
So I think we've brought up a lot of questions here. I'm wondering if either Justin or Michelle, or Jason could give us kind of a summary so the applicant will know what, what, what they're supposed to be able to answer when we bring this. We will be continuing this hearing, by the way. I see that Mr. Paterna would like to add a comment, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry to come back up, but something very, very important was mentioned, that's the Connecticut Siding Council. Now, Carol, Counselor Carrie and I have talked about this for a long time. The one meeting I went to at this Connecticut Siding Council, when the Eversource was putting in a project here in town, the first thing I was told when I got at the doorway is you cannot speak. The town doesn't have a seat at the Siding Council. So when East Windsor put those projects in, they had about ten percent of the input that people in this town are having, that US commissioners are having, because you're working directly with the developer. So we have an advantage here. You know I support the project, but I'm saying this is an advantage for us, because we can get our questions answered. Siding Council, and that's why you can't judge the East Windsor project with this project, because it was done under completely different criteria by the Connecticut Siding Council, and the town was not asked for its opinion. Just wanted, because that name came up, and I wanted to remind us that they're a problem.
Thank you.
You know, Eversource was building a new transformer and substation in town, and we couldn't say anything about it. Okay, thank you.
I do think we can provide input, but not necessarily at the meeting.
No, you could send a letter.
Yeah, that's about it, okay.
So I do have a quick summary, what I, I know you wanna visit the site, and so we're gonna determine some of the best locations through talking with East Windsor for the noise. And I guess I would echo what Mr. Paterna just said, that these, East Windsor had Siding Council-approved projects, which are a larger scale than what we're talking about here. So, you know, you may wanna keep that a little bit in perspective when you're visiting these sites. We're looking for some noise, specific noise information that Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Olet was looking for. You're looking for information on Eversource and how the credits will work, or where the energy will be going. Specifically, we're looking to have you kind of correct that zoning coverage related to the discussion we had. Those are the four primary things I had, was there something else?
And then just the MSDS sheet for.
For related to.
For the product itself.
The products.
For the solar.
Did you pick up on the frequency question?
That's the, the noise question, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that we wanna make sure we get an answer for? Okay, so I think, I don't think the town or the applicant, you know, I don't know, they can comment on it, yeah.
We'll make sure you get copies of everything that was read into the record, because some information was submitted by the public, and you'll have that for a review. We'll probably get it out to you electronically pretty quickly, if we're gonna continue this in two weeks.
So I think with the consensus of the commission, we will continue the public hearing to the next regular meeting.
So that would be February eleventh?
February eleventh.
Does that require a motion?
Can do it that way if you'd like.
I make a motion that we keep the public hearing open on application twenty-four forty-four P. CTEC Solar LLC, until next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously? Okay, the next application is application twenty-five dash zero-one P, Town of South Windsor Recreation Department. This is about a project that I've been heavily involved in, and therefore I'm going to recuse myself, and will step out of the meeting until we're finished with the public hearing.
Next application is application twenty-five dash zero-one P, Town of South Windsor Rec Department. Do we have anybody here to present?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Molly Keys, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. I am here tonight, I'm really just going to say that we're seeking approval for Phase One A of the Crosstown Trail. We came to you times a blur, but I wanna say it was like two meetings ago perhaps on the Crosstown Trail overview overall. And now we are focusing on Phase One A, which is Wapping Park to the Priest property. And I'm going to have Kevin Grindel come give an overview on our behalf for Phase One A.
Thank you very much, Molly, and to the commission, nice to see you again. My name is Kevin Grindel with Burton and Aljudis, an associate with the firm. We were in front of you on the December tenth meeting, seeking a favorable eight-twenty-four referral. We received that referral at that, at that meeting, and received comment from yourselves in regards to coming back through the process so that we can assure a public hearing format and receive comment, excuse me, comment from members of the community in regards to this project. So that's what gets us back in front of you this evening. In order to orient yourselves and members of the public, the application package was submitted, as well as the presentation plans that are up on the screen this evening. So as Molly had indicated, the overall scope of work that we are contracted with the town for is six point two total miles. And this evening, the focus is on Phase One A. And that Phase One A, in regards to the plans that you had, Phase One is in a rectangle, and Phase One A is a smaller oval within that section. And forgive me, because we were hoping to have larger sections in the overall phasing, but we were also looking to phase this project in regards to the funding that we've received and kind of backing ourselves into the engineering components that seek, or that we're seeking the funding for. So that, that Phase One A is really designed as such, based upon the funding that we have received to date. So what we're trying to do is take effectively bite-sized pieces of the overall six point two miles and develop this so that we can be putting out portions to construction at a time. So, that Phase One A is approximately one mile in overall length. And as Molly had indicated, extends from the property of Wapping Park out onto the Priest Farm and up to and not crossing Sullivan Ave. So, that becomes a critical path in regards to a comment that we are not crossing Sullivan Ave, because that crossing will take additional conversation with DOT at this point. We have not engaged or not, not started those, that dialogue in regards to getting across Sullivan Ave. So that is the reason that Phase One A stops where it does. There is a small parking lot on Sullivan Ave, which we have received approval from DOT for, but there is no crossing at that intersection or continuing further east. for, but there is no crossing at that intersection or continuing further east. So the overall project is again, a multi-use trail system. And that multi-use trail is comprised of a cross-section of paved pathway varying in width between 10 and 12 feet. The majority of this trail is a 10-foot trail, and based upon feedback that we received from Eversource, there are portions of that, that trail that will also be serving as or on top of the existing hall roads that, that are on the Eversource right-of-way. And where we are piggybacking onto those hall roads, their request has been to make this trail wide enough so that their trucks can utilize it as paved accessways. So there are portions on the trail that you do see wider, and that those extend up to 12 feet. So, once again, overall about one, about one mile long. And in regards to that, there are wetlands crossings throughout this corridor, and we do have a wetlands approval on this project, on this phase. And those crossings are going to be established with elevated boardwalks. And those elevated boardwalk conditions are about 1,200 feet of the overall, about 5,000 feet. So, you know, magnitude-wise, 20 to 25% of the overall project is elevated boardwalks based upon feedback that we received from the wetlands commission and subsequent wetlands approval. Those boardwalks, and we see, and one of the comments we received from staff during this process is emergency management and emergency vehicles onto this overall trail. So just for the record, and based upon the comment responses we've also submitted, the trail section, be it the boardwalks, will be designed to accommodate the police and rescue vehicles, a 4,000-pound maximum capacity of their, their UTV or ATV, their Polaris rescue vehicles. So in doing that, these boardwalks are designed to be constructed from the top down effectively in order to minimize the wetland disturbance. And again, this does go into the wetlands component, but just to understand the constructability and be constructed from the top down. So effectively, a mini excavator sits on top of one boardwalk section, reaches out, extends, and constructs the next. So these boardwalks will be constructed to accommodate mini excavator and loading, therefore they will be well-suited for that, that 4,000-pound maximum weight of the, of the emergency vehicles well. The, the component as far as access, or why we chose Phase 1A to start, recognizing that the overall corridor extends from Clark and out to Needawheffer. So that Phase 1A is not the beginning or the end of the overall corridor. And we chose that based upon its critical location and connecting two town properties, be it the Whopping Park portion and the, and the Priest Farm property. So we thought that was a good place to start, starting to make those connections in the overall scale of that six miles, rather than starting at one end and thereby ending as the funding ended. We thought it was kind of critical to then start making those connections between the town properties and then start weaving in on, on both ends as funding allowed. So that's, again, just to give you a brief insight as far as why 1A is where it is, rather than just beginning at one end of the overall and continuing through. So some of the components, again, kind of the nuts and bolts of how we're, you know, how this trail will physically be constructed. Like I said, the majority of this is going to be a 10-foot wide trail. And the entirety of it is working within the right-of-way on, for the Eversource right-of-way, that is, and working through that process in acquiring a license agreement with Eversource, working through both land acquisitions as well, or excuse me, their real estate division as well as their engineering division. Those have been the comments we've received in regards to keeping it within that right-of-way, taking advantage of that 300-foot clear zone that they do take the vegetation management very seriously within that zone, kind of piggybacking onto their cleared areas already, rather than stepping off of that right-of-way onto town properties where we, where we would be required to do additional clearing within town properties to make this trail corridor. We're recognizing that the, kind of accommodating this in regards to really trying to minimize any additional clearing, working within that Eversource right-of-way, also trying to, you know, kind of minimize the, the disturbance beyond whatever source already has, thereby using their hall roads when appropriate, but also understanding that the, that the, that the trail user is also not looking to be immediately adjacent to their distribution and their transmission structures. So effectively threading that needle, if you will, as far as trying to keep the trail as far away from their structures as possible to maximize the user experience, but then also coming into and adjacent to their structures where they already have the hall roads to minimize the disturbance to abutting properties and minimize the disturbance within that right-of-way when possible. Thinking specifically, one example is the Ellington Road crossing. That Ellington Road crossing already has a defined crossing that Eversource has established. Rather than creating a secondary or second crossing within Ellington Road, working with the DOT, we're piggybacking into the location they already have on that road, effectively enhancing the safety, putting pedestrian crosswalks within that corridor, but then using again, once again, that location so that we're not creating additional crossings within the highway. So I think that becomes kind of one good example of why we're doing it the way we are in regards to saying, well, they already have a hall road that is suitable for, you know, an 80,000-pound vehicle that's, that's doing the, the maintenance of the transmission structures. That is a defined base, defined width that's already there, well beyond the bounds of what we would need for a trail. It makes good sense to then piggyback, use it for the economies of scale, and then minimizing the crossings of the state highway there. Also looking at coming up onto the Priest Farm, there is already an informal curb cut there where their hall road comes onto the property. What we're looking to do is effectively mirror that, that, that access onto Sullivan Ave, and that would be where we're proposing to create a small parking, a trailhead parking lot, and then quickly get off of their hall road, again, trying to maximize the user experience to get, get through the Priest Farm and off of their accessways as quickly as possible. Pivoting to the boardwalk sections, those boardwalk sections are obviously going through critical locations, recognizing that a boardwalk is substantially more money per linear foot than a paved trail. So we are, you know, frugally showing those only where we need to, but also recognizing those really do increase the user experience because those are the areas that we're trying to encourage people to observe and to see. Those are the natural areas within those wetland habitats that really bang for the box. It's going to be, you know, one of the more special locations within the trail because it's getting people away from the transmission structures and across, you know, established wetlands that they don't already have access to. So again, kind of balancing the, you know, minimize impact while also maximizing the user experience. So in doing that, that's also the reason that, you know, that it's taken us this long, frankly. Working through the license agreements with Eversource, working through the encouragement permits with DOT, that's the reason that it has taken us this amount of time to then secure, you know, the, or prepare the plans that you now have in front of you. And these plans are still working documents. They're not ready to go out to construction yet. We're still working on finalizing the license agreements with Eversource, but we do have sign-offs from DOT. We do have wetlands approval. And again, that's the reason we were back in front of you in December, was to be seeking that 824 favorable referral from this commission. So, you know, working, you know, working behind, behind the scenes to check off the boxes so that when we're ready for construction, we have everything in order so that construction document goes out with all the permits in hand and, and documents ready to bid and construct. So that is it in a nutshell. Again, we have submitted the plans, we have received staff comment, we have responded to staff comment. So that gets us here this evening. Obviously, public hearing, I'm very interested to hear any comment, any feedback we do have from yourselves and the public. My hope is that we can address those comments at this, at this meeting, but also understanding that what we're looking to do is take the comments we receive in Phase 1A and then incorporate them into future phases, recognizing their overall Phase 1 and then kind of future as we work back towards Clark and forward to Needawheffer. We have a lot of trail to go, and what I'm hoping to do is incorporate, you know, these comments we're receiving now so that as we come before you with future phases, we can say, remember that comment, this is how we addressed it, or this is how we mitigated those concerns moving forward. So with that, once again, public hearing, I'll step aside, and I am available for any, any comment and any response. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now turn to town staff, Director of Planning, Michelle, and Assistant Planner, Justin.
Thank you. So this is a request for a special exception to Table 3.1.1A and a site plan of development for Phase 1A of the Crosstown Trail, including the installation of a bituminous trail, boardwalk sections, associated grading, and parking area on properties located at 765 Clark Street, 1556, 1559, 1560 Ellington Road, and 1407 Sullivan Avenue are our zone. This application is subject to the special exception review criteria of Section 8.4B, which includes that the proposal is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Plan of Conservation Development. The application has met the requirements of the zoning regulations. The land is physically suited to the proposed use. Minimal if any adverse environmental impacts are created. No traffic or other hazards will be created. The impacts on the capacity of the precedent-proposed utilities, street drainage, systems, sidewalks, and other elements of the infrastructure will be minimal. There will be minimal or no adverse effects on existing uses in the area. Surrounding property values will be conserved. The character of the neighborhood will be maintained or minimally disrupted. The general welfare of the community will be, will be served. There is a balance between the neighborhood acceptance and community needs. Historic factors are adequately protected, or due consideration to preservation of historic factors have been demonstrated. The overall physical appearance of the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding development and the commission's goals for the neighborhood slash corridor. The architectural design is aesthetically pleasing and blends well into the surrounding areas. Noise created by onsite activities, including vehicle equipment noise. And finally, the commission may impose additional conditions in accordance with these regulations in order to ensure that all applicable criteria enumerated above and/or within a particular use category are satisfied. So just in short, as the applicant stated, it's about a 5,500 linear feet trail utilizing hot-mix asphalt and boardwalk sections to be a part of a master plan to develop a 6.2-mile multi-use recreational trail. The plans appear to meet all zoning requirements. No proposed improvements in Phase 1A would affect the requirements listed in our residential zoning table. One thing that I'd like to bring up is the narrative states that, so approval from the property owners has been secured, but we start to look at if actual easements have been granted and filed. So the applicant has stated that all portions of the trail outside of town-owned land is contained within the Eversource easement, but if you look at drawing three, there is a wetland crossing that's outside of that easement. So staff just wants to make sure that, because it's such a critical part of the process, that the easements are properly secured, filed. You know, it, it has implications to the maintenance of the trail in the future. So that's something that we just want to make note of. Finally, the Inland Wetlands Agency approved this application at their November 6, 2024 meeting with standard approval conditions, including a requirement of bond posting by any contracted entities other than the Town of South Windsor for erosion and sediment control compliance. Final plans shall incorporate the conditions and comments associated with this approval. So I also have comments from our town engineer, and I have a memo that was issued by the Conservation Commission, so I'll read those into the record now. From Jeffrey Doolittle, town engineer. "In reviewing the plans for Phase 1A of the South Windsor Crosstown Trail, I noticed there is a section of trail parallel to Sullivan Ave between the farm field and a 90-degree turn by the Ellington Road intersection that is only six feet wide. This is not wide enough for emergency vehicles, maintenance vehicles, or for two bicyclists to pass safely. I suggest this section of path be at least eight feet wide and preferably 10 feet wide for safe access to trail users, emergency vehicles, and maintenance vehicles. The rest of the trail is at least 10 feet wide." And here's the memo from the Conservation Commission dated December 23, 2024. Regarding Application 25-01P, Town of South Windsor Crosstown Trail. "The South Windsor Conservation Commission at its November 6 meeting discussed the application and wanted to bring the following items forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. Recognizing that maintaining green space is essential for protection, protecting vegetation habitat and important species that are vulnerable to human impacts associated with development, the commission suggests addressing the following. Number one, signage. Ensure clear, well-designed signage to include indicators for sensitive habitats, reminders to, quote, 'leave no trace,' unquote, and notices to discourage feeding waterfowl and other animals. Number two, public information. Provide educational material on the Town of South Windsor website and Parks and Recreation website, social media posts, and brochures at town buildings. And number three, park maintenance. Add trash receptacles at each access point entrance, regular removal of debris from the walking path, and repair damaged pathways. The commission looks forward to the trail development. Taking measures now to create a sustainable, well-maintained trail system will benefit both our community and the environment over the long term. Thank you for your consideration. Barbara Kelly, Chairperson." And that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, Justin. All right, now we'll hear from the public. Anybody who wants to come forward to speak in favor of this application?
Hi, my name is Mike Lewis, South Windsor. I live down Ellington, so close to where the trail is going to cross on Ellington. I'm fully in favor of this trail. I know tonight's about 1A, but I've looked at the whole plan. I think it's great. I think surrounding towns have similar trails, and it's a great opportunity for all of the residents, whether they're aware that it's going to happen or not, or that there's a plan for it. I think everyone would benefit from it. I do have concerns just about the crossing on Ellington. There's a similar crossing with the rapid-flashing beacons by Mill on the River, and that, it's a similar corner. I mean, traffic is fast on that road. So I'm in full support of the plan, but I would be concerned as someone that drives there every day, traffic is kind of crazy. So I don't think there's been any accidents at the Mill on the River crossing. I would be concerned about that Ellington crossing because people can build up a lot of speed because it's a straightaway. So I don't know if there's any plans in the future to consider pedestrian medians or bumpouts to make the crosswalk shorter and add traffic and calving measures that way. But again, in full support of the plan. I hope others are in full support as well. Thank you.
Oh, can you make sure you just sign in, please? Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Steve Cohen. Our son, Daniel, did an Eagle Scout project, building a trail and crossing a brook. And the intention at the time was that would connect up to part of the Crosstown Trail. We were looking forward to it at the time. We thought it would be wonderful for that, for that to happen. He finished the bridge when he was 16 years old. He's now approaching 30. So I think that it's a good time now to get this project started. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing and seeing none. We have one letter that needs to be read into the record.
From Justin.
Is there anybody opposed to this application?
Dumb question.
Hearing and seeing none, we'll read a letter into the record.
All right, this is from Justin Ariando on Loomis Road in South Windsor. "I'm writing to you in favor of Application 25-01P. Outdoor recreation is a hallmark of every desirable town in our area. Farmington and the surrounding area has the Canal Trail. West Hartford has Elizabeth Park and the Reservoir. Glastonbury has Riverfront Park. South Windsor has a few jewels as well, including Nevers, Needawheffer, Donnelly, and Whopping. However, I hope to bring forward a unique perspective as we evaluate this opportunity of introducing a Crosstown Trail in our community. Unfortunately today, our community does not have a truly wheelchair-accessible park. We are presented with an opportunity to change that. I'm extremely excited to see the proposed plans call for a trail system built on bituminous and concrete materials as opposed to the traditional stone dust and gravel builds. I encourage you to approve this submission and emphasize the importance of these materials as this phase and future phases are brought forward. This design will allow for an entire portion of our beautiful town to be explored and appreciated by our entire population. This not only allows us to continue promoting and reinforcing inclusiveness by being wheelchair-accessible, which selfishly is important-
it seems to happen every fifteen to twenty years? Number two, and this is a bigger one, do we get, do we have the opportunity to maintain those corridors ourselves as the town beyond just the barrier, the ends of the bituminous surface? Like, can we make it look nice, or are we going to be stuck just maintaining the path width? Those are the only questions I had.
I can respond to each, or I can...
Nope.
If you go to that direct response, what happens when Eversource comes in? Eversource has the right to do what they want to do, what they're...
Eversource has the opportunity or has the right to do any maintenance that they feel needed, and they're not going to resign those rights based upon that license agreement. So with that being said, they can disrupt our trail whenever they see fit. That is also the reason that the conversation has been such that there are portions of this trail that will be wider. So the expectation is that where their trucks are going to be on this pavement, the pavement will be thick enough and wide enough so that they're not negatively impacting the trail. With that, and just as an aside, I worked very closely on portions within the town of Portland on the airline trail extension through Eversource, and they have the same license agreement that we expect to receive here with the town of Portland. They have been fantastic neighbors in regards to doing the maintenance and restoration activities as they do their work and pull out. Frankly, they're leaving that trail system, be it stone dust, but in better shape than they found it. So while they do have the rights to do and perform any maintenance, they really are good stewards, recognizing that it is important to them to have these multi-use trails through their corridors as well. And once again, they have been, they have been very good neighbors in those regards. In regards to, do we have the rights to effectively make this, make this trail system look nice? The expectation is the cross-section is that ten or twelve-foot-wide paved area, and then there are grass shoulders on each side. So, you know, roughly between two and five feet on either side will be a grass shelf that will, you know, kind of allow this trail system to be, you know, kind of, quote, "look nice." We understand, as I had indicated before, we are trying to balance where the trail goes with minimizing the disturbance to the natural habitat, but also trying to get people away from the transmission structures, because frankly, nobody wants to look at a transmission structure while they're taking a walk unless you're, you know, a utility contractor that really loves right-ofways, per se. But I mean, effectively, we are trying to capitalize on the resources within that right-ofway while also kind of piggybacking under the disturbances they've already created there. So again, as I said before, kind of threading that needle is the best euphemism I have. There are sections we have looked very closely at, both with the Walk and Wheelways members and with town staff, is to say, hey, is this an area suitable for, to get off the trail, you know, off their haul roads? Or is this really best suited based upon the natural conditions of wetlands and so on, building properties and adjacent land uses? Hey, we're just going to stay within their, you know, within their haul road and make it look as nice as we can, recognizing that the designed vehicle is going to be an eighty-thousand-pound truck looking to do, you know, access their transmission structures, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burstein.
Sounds very buttoned up. No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
I just have a few questions, even though I'm in full support, you guys. Funding, is this kind of an annual thing? There's a grant that goes out, request, and it's an annual funding opportunity, or is it another fourteen years?
For the, for the funding opportunities, there are, there are a number of funding avenues that we're looking at for trail constructions such as this. The funding for Phase One A is a combination of earmark monies coming from the legislature in Hartford, as well as connectivity money coming from DOT. So those two are what's funding Phase One A.
So it's, it's not true to assume that they'll continue funding the project?
I would like to say yes, but unfortunately, it is, you know, we're beholden to the funding streams, both coming out of DEP or, you know, the legislature, DEP and DOT. We've been lucky. We've been, you know, we are grateful for the monies that we've received for Phase One A. There are other funding opportunities, both recognizing there are portions of this that are funded through, it's a community connectivity grant program through DOT that is focused on sidewalks and bike-ped mobility. We're also looking strongly to fund future phases with the Connecticut DEP Rec Trails Program. That Rec Trails Program is what's designed, is what's funding the design portion of this. There are also other federal highway monies that come through DOT, possibly steep money, lots of money, you know, there's an alphabet soup of acronyms that we're looking at at any given time. There's another connectivity grant round, there's possible steep options there. So it's, there's, there's a number of them out there.
There's options.
But we're also balancing that with other, you know, priorities and within the town. And also priorities kind of statewide on, there are many communities that are looking to get Rec Trails money, so we're also kind of cognizant of that, so.
Sure.
The short answer is there's not one, and it's not fully funded, but man, we're trying.
Okay, I didn't know if once they started something, you know, in Hartford, that they would see it through. I'm just curious, are there going to be hours for this trail? Hours, like...
Similar to our parks.
Similar to our parks, so at night, people could be on the trails and, I'm just trying to get a feel.
Parks are open sunrise to sunset. Do people go on parks at night? Sure. I'm sure people could probably go on the trails at night. We wouldn't encourage it.
Are, are there going to be signs?
Yeah, so there'll be signs, similar to all our parks with rules and regulations. And then obviously, the police will be aware once the trail's, you know, fully constructed, just basically, just like all of our other parks, just to make sure that everything's going on and safe. You know, we talk about, especially in nicer weather, certain areas are more populated, so in nicer weather, obviously Nevers, Ry Street in the evenings, things of that nature, so the police work with us to kind of patrol those sections.
Keep, yeah, because their truck or their cars can go right down, down there. I live in an area where I'm on a corner, and it's right near the easement to the power lines, and there's a lot of trash. I'm always picking up trash. So you guys, just looking at the Conservation Commission's notes, there'll be trash receptacles, I'm sure, you know, spaced out somewhere, somehow. And are there, I know bikes and people, but are there other vehicles that will be banned from these trails?
So, we're going to talk about, in terms of like rules for the trail, similar to our park trails, just making sure that there's no like motorcycles. We have an ordinance currently that states that like self-propelling bikes.
Oh, like e-bikes?
So when the ordinance was made in the parks and like with a lot of town ordinances, they're fairly old, so I don't think e-bikes were necessarily a thing when the ordinances were built. But we've chatted a lot about e-bikes and the misuse of those. Certain ones go higher speed than others, and certain ones do not have actual pedals. Right, so we're going to be looking into that. I've talked to the chief a little bit about seeing what we can do in terms of the regulations, and also potentially going to change the ordinance if we had to or amend it. Because it's not necessarily a problem that we see often, but we do see some use of the more advanced e-bikes, I want to say, again, the ones without the pedals that can go like twenty, twenty-five miles per hour, and we don't want to see that on this trail.
Right, right.
We've been lucky the last two years, I want to say, the ATVs have really been down in use, like on Nevers and such. We haven't really seen as much use of it, so we're hoping that would continue. But again, we're going to post the rules and have patrol.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Cretary.
Just, I see, from the drawings, I could see here, there's one parking area right at the very beginning. Is that the only point of access for parking?
There will be in the overall trail corridor, there will be multiple parking lots, but in this Phase One A, the only new parking lot will be that, that parking lot on Sullivan, taking advantage of the existing parking within Whopping, so that there will be, there will be, you know, connections into Whopping, taking advantage of that parking lot. There will be future-phase parking at Clark, and then we're looking at, you know, phases up to Niederwasser, taking advantage of existing parking and possibly some new parking up there too. But in this, this Phase One A, it's just that one new parking lot on Sullivan.
Okay, and ultimately, the, where it does cross Ellington Road that was mentioned before as a potential, there's not going to be a parking area there or anything, right? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Cavendish.
Thank you. I have a few questions. They're mainly surrounded around the crosswalk intersection of Ellington Road on Route Thirty. So looking through, I think I'm on sheet number two of six, this is where a lot of my questions would stem from, trying to examine the map, but on the bottom left-hand side of that page, I see sort of what will be there, like the signs and the lights and everything. So sort of entering this project for, I guess, the past couple of years since I've known about it, I remember learning about it at the one-seventy-five anniversary event, I always wondered about this intersection, whether it'd be a bridge or a crosswalk. And, and seeing this here, and I'm really curious about this because at UConn, I know there's a similar issue with people crossing the road. So instead of a traffic light, it's more of a, I assume you hit the button, lights will, will flare, and you'll cross the road if, of course, drivers stop.
Yes.
Okay.
There are assumptions there, but you are correct. If drivers stop, that is the rapid, the ran, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the RFB, is the DOT's recommendation for this crossing. So that is, that detail on the bottom left of that sheet is their recommendation based upon the warrant that we submitted for that pedestrian terrier crossing, taking into account the volume of traffic. So the average daily traffic counts as well as the speed, rate of speed on that, on that road in that location. That was DOT's recommendation for how we treat that and how we handle that. There are other conversations to be had in regards to other options. Those other options are the, referred to as a HAWK signal, where it's a more of a conventional traffic light system that is pedestrian-focused. DOT is, we reviewed that with them, and there was not the warrant for, for that system based upon the anticipated pedestrian volume and existing traffic volume. So that was their recommendation for this location. Also, having heard the comment received from public, you know, we are cognizant of those speeds and kind of working with DOT in regards to if there are opportunities for pedestrian bumpouts or areas of refuse on that intersection, we would be, you know, happy to incorporate them as the bike-ped and highway safety conversation at DOT would continue. But as of right now, this is what they've approved.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, I'm more familiar with the Hawkeye Crossing, because like I said, I've, every day I drive up to UConn, I think they have like five of them, one on Stores Road, a couple where they have like the north dormitories, and they have one or two of this one that's being proposed. And what I've seen is kids have a lot of easier time across the road compared to these, where sometimes they almost get hit by a car. Obviously, there's more people crossing then compared to here, the density is not comparable, but I, I just wanted to point that out and was curious why that was considered over the other. I also noticed on the map here, it seems there is a gate being proposed on the, trying to think, the southern side of that intersection of the trail, is that correct?
Yes.
And not, on the northern side as well, or only the southern side?
So, and that, and that's, that's current conversation in regards to license agreements with Eversource, is understanding that their preference is have, is to have gated crossings at, or gated entrances at all of their, or crossings, or, excuse me, gated crossings at their entrances. Either way, there is an existing gate shown on one side and not the other, and that's the dialogue we have with them right now, is the, is the point, is those gates will be located far enough off the road to provide a safe, you know, refuse area for their trucks to get off the state highway, to then open their gates and get onto their right-ofway. What we're also trying to do is locate those gates close enough to the road so that people can't hide, if you will, people can't park there and utilize those, those trail entrances as parking areas for one or two cars. So that's a conversation we're currently having with Eversource's engineering department, is to say what is the appropriate location for those gates, but the expectation is that at all of those crossings, there will be gates so that, you know, vehicles cannot enter this trail.
Yes, that was my concern. Thank you. I do have one or two more comments and questions. So I think someone brought it up about road diets, and I know, I think, a year or two, I'm not sure if it was Connecticut, but I know there's like a new, like, Safe Streets model that came out in twenty-twenty-three. You know, for the, a while, road diets have been the topic, whether or not, how to implement them. I know some towns have had like, on their own roads, like either put medians in the center or kind of zigzag the roads a little bit to force drivers to slow down, or sort of minimize the size of the roads, again, to force drivers to slow down. So I'm not merely putting this comment on the record here, maybe for the town to consider in the couple of years to come, but maybe trying to do more like heavy intensive road diet measures for this intersection rather than just maybe skimming down each side of the road by a foot, maybe something a little bit more, not necessarily interactive, but just making sure drivers are forcibly slowing down for this. Because the last thing we want is trying to promote walkability through this Crosstown Trail and someone gets hurt.
Yeah, I'd just make a comment, it's a state road, so the town doesn't have any control of it.
That's what I'm saying, on, on local roads, I've seen it, so.
Right, so there would be something the state would have to do. I don't believe there's any plans to do any upgrades to Ellington Road in the near future. I remember they did some not too long ago where they repaved it, but it certainly is a valid comment in when an F Ellington Road does get looked at for, you know, any kind of upgrades, certainly have that as a comment.
Gotcha, thank you. I'll leave on this last comment, not a question, but a comment. So before I was even on the commission, I remember I attended a Wheels and Walkways committee meeting. I was really curious about this project, heard a lot of buzz about it with the one-seventy-five event as well, and I remember I heard, it was like, the thing has been and works for a good ten years. I was like, hmm, I wonder if it's ever going to come to our desk, and, you know, today's the day, so. Appreciate all the hard work and dedication that a lot of the volunteers have put forward on this plan. Looking forward to voting on it tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Cretary.
I don't have any comments. I'm fully supportive.
I also, I'm totally in favor of it. It's, you know, long time coming, and no other comments. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for chairing during that. So our next item is application, it's actually the PCC-sponsored zoning text amendment for signs. And we have in our package the actual changes. I think we went through this once before. Does everyone want to go through it again, or? Okay, in which case, we'll listen to comments from our staff. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a proposal for a zoning text amendment to modify Section six-point-five signs. The proposed changes address definitions, general provisions, illuminated signs, several tables, sign allowance in residential, commercial, office, industrial, and bucklin gateway zones, off-premises temporary signs, and adding Appendix K sign lighting. Currently, the regulations do not fully address electronic message centers or digitally displayed signs. Detailed language, special exception criteria, definitions, provisions, and tables have been added into Section six-point-five-point-five illuminated signs. Within this section, language has been drafted pertaining to sign... Within this section, language has been drafted pertaining to sign, cabinet, and lettering illumination. The illumination of off-premises temporary signs is not allowed. The proposed text also provides information pertaining to the location of new signs related to town and state intersections and rights of way. Natural site conditions such as topography are also addressed. Text changes regarding sign allowance are addressed in both the single-family residential sign table, the commercial slash office slash industrial sign table, and the bucklin gateway sign table. Minor text changes include the update of references to subsections within Section 6.5. Appendix K sign lighting has been created. Language and a table have been drafted to primarily address the concept of lumens, Kelvin, and how to convert from watts to lumens. The planning department supports these proposed changes. This new language will give applicants and the town more information related to signage, which will expedite permitting and clearly identify opportunities and restrictions. The Town of South Windsor Plan of Conservation and Development supports text changes and the updating of our regulations. Staff recommends that the public hearing remain open to give members of the public time to review the updates and make comments. Uh, the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed the proposed amendment as required. Uh, CROG provided the following report dated January 3rd, 2025, which I do not have. Josh, do we have a copy of that? The CROG report?
I could run upstairs and get it, if you'd like.
Do you, can you just read it to us from, uh, online?
Yeah, we did send it to CROG, and, um, they did come back with no effect on any, um, zoning properties. I, I will submit that for the record. You don't have it down here. But it was.
So that concludes staff comments.
Okay. So, um, are there any comments from members of the public? Hearing and seeing none, uh, we'll go to commissioners. See, we started in that direction. All right, Commissioner, your question?
I don't have any comments or questions.
Commissioner Beteri?
No further comments.
Commissioner Foley?
No comments.
Commissioner Cavanaro?
No comments.
Commissioner Dexter?
No comments, thanks to the subcommittee.
Commissioner Bernstein?
Yeah, I think the subcommittee did a spectacular job on this. No questions or comments.
Especially since you were a member. Commissioner, uh, Willlet?
No more comments.
Commissioner Boganski? Okay. Any reason to keep the public hearing open?
I, I think we were suggesting, just because this isn't one of those things that the public really knows about, but maybe if someone watched tonight and now has an interest, they might show an interest. So I, I would recommend just keeping it open, and then if nobody shows up next meeting, close it.
Okay, we need a motion to that effect?
We need a motion to keep it open. Motion to keep it open.
Second.
Until?
Until next hearing, which is what? February 11th?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, now that's the end of the public hearings. We now go to our regular meeting. The minutes on, uh, from January 14th. I did have a couple of comments, if I can find them. Okay, I think this is it, yes. So on page, uh, four, could you spell out SWOT? It's an abbreviation that.
Sure, it's, it's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I could add that.
Yes. And then, uh, on page six, second paragraph, I think there was a suggestion that we require the, um, developer to provide, um, bus services so that this doesn't become a burden on a town. So just put a sentence or two in about that.
Is that for the Eagle Auto application, or? No, I, I, I can help you with that, Josh. Okay.
Okay. So, um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation, uh, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a comment of that sort?
Good evening. My name is Doug Gugino. I work at, I work at, I live at 55 Chapel Road. And I appreciate all the time and effort you all put into this. There's, um, going to be sometime, uh, Project 8 of the Road Reconstruction Project brought to you for approval. And I might, I'm here for, looking for answers on when does that happen? There's, this is an unusual project within the road reconstruction because alternatives are being considered. But when it comes to you, there won't be, it'll be whatever the decision is. And I'm not sure where the decision's being made. Questions that I had started, um, with the town council. And, um, Mr. Stetson, the Director of Public Works, has responded back to me. The next step will be to refine the plan, taking into consideration everyone's opinions, and refer the project to you. And then you'll provide your recommendation to the town council, and they'll be approved, they'll prove it. But my question is, there are valid alternatives being considered. I don't know who's considering them. Will, will there be another, will be something else presented prior to the single project coming before the TPC?
So is that an 824 we're talking about?
It would be an 824 referral, that would be what he's referring to. So it's not an approval by this commission, it would be a comment back to the town council about it. Um, as far as its status, you know, again, that's an engineering-driven project right now. So I really asked to whether it will go back to the public before, I would assume so, but I don't know that for sure. So you really just need to keep track of where it is in the process. Um, but it hasn't been referred to this commission under 824 as of yet.
A referral is not an ask for an approval?
This, this body does not approve projects within the town right-of-way. That would be the town council.
Okay, so there's options being considered?
So basically, when an 824 referral happens, that means that the town's going to spend money on a project in, in, something like this would come to them, the planning and zoning, for comment on how they feel it meets the plans for the town, back to the town council, whether they think it's a favorable idea or not. So it'll come to planning and zoning when it has the.
So I'm using the wrong word then. It's going to be, it's going to be able to be commented on and challenged?
Not with this commission, no. This commission will be commenting and giving information back. As far as the public, you mean? I, I guess I'm not quite sure. If you wanted to have public comment, you really should be following it through the engineering department, then ultimately when it goes to the town council. Because this commission will be commenting on a plan that the town council sends for comment to say, how does this fit into your plans? And then they'll look at the project.
There's options for it to fit into the plan. That's my confusion.
Again, it's not going to be this board making that decision. It would be made through the engineering process in the town council. This, this board doesn't approve sidewalk projects on public roads.
It's not a sidewalk. It's a road reconstruction project.
Again, it, within the public right-of-way is within the town council's jurisdiction, not this commission's, right? It doesn't come to them for an approval because it's not a land use, it's a road.
Okay.
So it's a little different.
Mr. Stetson's comment that it was going to come to this body next is just?
It's part of the process. All right, it's part of the process, but it's not, they're not the approval agencies, my point. It's not going to be yea or nay from this commission's perspective in whether it goes forward. It'll be town council.
We don't get involved in the details on one of those things. Unlike these site plans, uh, we don't get involved in the details. We just basically say to the town council, yes, we think it's a good idea, no, we think it's a lousy idea. Uh, and we don't get involved in the.
So it's at the town council that there'll be a public hearing?
It's up to them.
I think town council has to make the decision on what ends up being done. There, that, that would be the authority to make the final decision, whether they choose to do it through public hearing or not. I think a town council member would have to answer that question.
Commissioner Foley, you look like you're about to.
What the normal process, just for commission's benefit, is when we do public roads like this, the engineering department does a public information meeting, brings out any residents that may be affected by it. They discuss plans, potential plans, and I think this is where there is a lot of questions and concerns on Chapel Road, what would or wouldn't happen with it, and that's where it's kind of in redesign or discussions or whatever. Ultimately, something may be referred to, it hasn't as of yet, otherwise you'd be. So I don't think it's been finalized in the engineering department designs yet.
And he didn't mention that, that he doesn't anticipate any construction happening in 2025?
Again, that would be an engineering-driven project, so if he's the Director of Public Works, I would imagine he would have a good handle on that.
So to be in direct contact with him about where this, where the status is.
They know, the engineering knows, the public has an interest in that. I think, uh, conversations I've had that they would go back to the public, whatever plan they want to try to move forward, so.
Oh, you believe that there'll be another informational meeting?
I, I think that would be the only logical thing, since we didn't have consensus on what was going to happen. But again, that's the engineering department, and I will make sure that they're aware that you were here tonight, interested in the process.
All right, well, thank you very much. I gotta put my hand rest.
Counselor? Oh, okay. Anybody else in the public? Anyone from the else, from the public? Like to speak at this point? Hearing and seeing none, move on. Um, so our next item is Application 2448P, Mi- Michael's, Mitchell's Power Yard.
Is that on late?
We admire your patience.
Yes, a million times. Uh, hello, uh, my name is Isaac Lones. I'm a project manager for Michael's Power, Inc. I work out of their South Windsor office over on, uh, North Nutmeg, uh, Nutmeg Road North, off of Route 5. And, um, we're just looking for renewal of the two-year temporary and conditional permit for the temporary staging area for material and equipment, um, at, uh, 416 John Fitch Boulevard in South Windsor, Connecticut. And that's really all I have.
Okay. This is actually, I don't know how many times you've done this, and it's been, gone through pretty easily. Any comments from the staff?
Uh, it, no, just that the, again, this is a renewal of two-year permit for, um, storage of, a staging area of equipment. And that is on 416 John Fitch Boulevard. It is a couple hundred feet off of Route 5, so it's accessed through a private drive on Route 5. Um, I just would comment historically, there's had been a lot of industrial uses out on that site that did get cleaned up as part of this, um, storage yard, so that was a real benefit of that a couple of years ago. This has been in existence since 2019. Um, it has been renewed, um, every two years since that time. Uh, we have not had any concerns expressed to our office at this time, so, um, I guess that's good news for you. Nobody's complaining to us on anything. Um, storage yards are not permitted unless there's a building, therefore this is, uh, by temporary conditional permit. Your temporary conditional permit wording is that they may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Uh, may be given, if the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will be substantially served. An appropriate use of neighboring property will be not substantially or permanently injured. Traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. Um, we do not have any modifications to request at this time. I am just kind of curious, so I know, um, at one point it was like a five-year window that you thought you'd be out there. Do you have a window where you think there's an end to your staging out there? I know it was for doing some work in the general area.
Um, yeah, at, at this time, I, I can't speak on a timeline for, for the, for the yard. But, um, it is for continuous work, uh, that EverSource has for us in this area, so.
Okay. Are there, I'll, I'll just ask if there are any commissioners who have a comment, uh, turn your light on. Not seeing any. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the two-year conditional permit. Let's see.
In expiration of January 28th, 2027.
There we go. 28th. All right, make a motion to approve Application 24-48P, uh, for Michael, Michael's T and C Equipment Storage. Uh, and the conditions are, temporary conditional permit will expire on January 28th, 2027, and must be renewed at the time if the use is to continue. All plans will be used in the field by the developer, must bear the stamp and authorization signature of Town of South Windsor.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, um.
Thank you.
And again, uh. The next, next item, uh, we're skipping Sea Tech Solar. Um, the next item would be the Town of South Windsor Recreation Department. I'm going to recuse myself. Just a reminder, at this point, the alternates cannot participate in any discussion or vote. And I will step out.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Do we need to seat one of the alternates in place of the chairman, though?
I don't know who is seated.
I think it is Commissioner Boganski's turn to set.
You're up, Commissioner Boganski. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Application 25-01P, Town of South Windsor Recreation Department. Uh, so, the special ex, yeah, so points one through 11 are already set. So I'll read points 12, 13, 14, and 15. Uh, engineering comments dated January 24th, 2025 shall be incorporated into the final plans. Uh, easements in favor of the Town of South Windsor over the property of N-F, South Windsor Land Conservation Trust, Inc., shall be granted, filed, and shown on the plans. Uh, property line layouts of all relevant parcels shall be verified and updated as needed in the final plans. And point 15, additional grading information, uh, shall be added to the plans.
Second? All right, all those in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
Any discussion?
Uh, I, I don't know if it's appropriate for some of the things Conservation Commission came up with as far as signage, or, or is that just baked into the total plan, or should we add it?
I mean, this is a special exception use. You can put conditions in that you think help support your special exception criteria. So, um, you could put a comment in that, uh.
Maintenance plan, or?
Comments of the Conservation Commission shall be addressed, um, through the Recreation Department's.
I'd like to respectfully add the comments from the Conservation Commission be added to, as a, uh, condition of approval.
Uh, that request is accepted. Uh, do you want me to write it down like word for word and then read it out, or?
No, we'll, we'll tweak it to.
Okay, I'll just let it be known that that is point 16, and the final point of the standard approval modifications.
Yes.
We have a second. Any more comments? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck, guys.
Okay, I understand we have some, oh, wait a minute, we, we have an appointment of, uh, Michael LeBlanc to the Architectural and Design Review Committee for a two-year term, ending?
2027.
But when?
If you appoint him tonight, it'll be two years from tonight.
Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
Move to approve Michael Blank being appointed to the Architectural and Design Review Committee for a two-year term, expiring two years from today.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mike, uh, is it? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mike is a former member of this commission, and I think he'd be a great addition to that committee. Okay, we have some bonds, right? Or do we?
No, you do not have bonds.
No bonds, okay. Any old business?
No, just you do have two applications that didn't make your agenda, so you have two more applications you're officially receiving tonight, but there's no old business.
I'll just remind everyone to let me know if you would like us to sign you up for that Connecticut bar training on March 22. I've heard from Commissioners Willett and Bernstein. Commissioner Dexter is going to get back to me. Deadline, I think, is February 26th. To let us know.
Connecticut Federation of Planning flyer that, did we give them a copy yet, Josh? It just came in for the dinner that they have every year. Seventy dollars, which is quite steep. But it is gonna have a judge that talks about 830G lawsuits. So I don't know if a couple commissioners want to go to it or not. So we'll scan that, just came in and get it out to you. I think it's March, the last Thursday of March, if I'm not mistaken, like the 20th night. No, it's an evening dinner. It's at the AquaTurf. It's just really pricey.
Anybody we know being honored?
It's kind of more expensive as the years have gone on, for sure.
Anybody we know being honored?
No, I don't know of anybody. They didn't even put out solicitations for that. Usually if you have over 12 years, you'd be honored. But I didn't even see a flyer for that this year, so. But I don't know, does anybody have 12 years that hasn't been honored yet? We may have to look at that. I'll, I'll check into that. So we'll send that out, and if you're interested, let us know. It would count towards your training requirement.
And a full belly. The bar is not open. You have to pay for your beverages. Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.